Good evening, everyone. We are back from closed session. We are on item B1, Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item B2 is the land acknowledgement. And I know my mask, my microphone hits my mask sometimes, so if it happens tonight, just flag me and I'll change. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chochinio Mowekma Karkin Aloney peoples. And acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. We're going to go on to item A3, which is the welcome and meeting procedures. I would like to welcome everyone to this regular board meeting. The mission of the West Contra Costa Unified School District is to prepare students for post-secondary education and to be responsible-thinking contributing members of our global society. We believe in public education as the most important function in a democratic society. We believe we must treat everyone with courtesy, dignity, and respect, provide safe and nurturing environments in which to learn, teach, work, and participate. Serve our students by working as partners with our community to develop well-rounded lifelong learners and contributing members of a global society. Take responsibility for our behavior and performance to ensure the highest possible achievement of all students, employees, and our school community. Provide equitable and essential communication and support for successful learning, teaching, working, and participating. Respect, celebrate, and welcome the diversity, uniqueness, and contributions of all members of our school community. The board members should not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principle, group interest, or the member's own personal interest. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities on discussion items through the Zoom app or by telephone. To indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item, raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak, your hand must be raised before public comment begins for the item. To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. With that, Mr. Duffy, can we have the roll call?
Yes, good evening. President Phillips?
Here.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Present.
Trustee Reckler?
Good evening, present.
Trustee Christian?
Present.
Trustee Leon?
Present.
And trustee Emiliano?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duffy. We're going to move on to item B5, which is report ratification of closed session. We have nothing to report out on today. And next, we're going to move to item B6, which is agenda review and adoption. Board members, do you have anything that you would like to take off of the consent calendar? Trustee Reckler?
Thank you. I want to pull C8 authorized district staff to complete the application process for obtaining a CDS school code for the K-12 Virtual Academy. And then I would also like to pull C11 and C12, which is the resolution and the purchase for the voice amplification for classrooms.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, why did you have something?
Thank you, President Phillips. It's not about consent calendar. Is that okay?
Sure.
I wanted to table item F1 and send it to the academic committee for review.
F1. F1 is the superintendent's employment agreement?
No, it's the con- oh, I'm so sorry, E1. So I'm so glad you confirmed E1. It's the new policy, the classroom interruption discussion on administrative regulations.
There, just if I could give a little clarification. So tonight, the point was to have a conversation about an issue, which probably will go to the academic subcommittee, but there is no new policy.
So if I understand you correctly, it's just so that we can discuss one specific situation, not the full policy? Is that, I'm having, I don't understand.
Um. Maybe. So. Without having a discussion about the item, there, there is not a new policy right now. And so we're going to have a discussion about an issue, but there is not a new policy. If that makes sense, because I don't really want to, right, because we're discussing the item, you know what I mean? But there's not a new policy for us to vote on. I don't have a policy. It's a discussion about an issue.
Okay, I mean, as long as I hear you say that it's whatever issue we're discussing is going to go back to the academic subcommittee. I'm okay with that. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, was there, does any other board member have any other items that they want to take off consent or off the agenda? No? Okay, okay. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda minus with C8, C11, and C12 being moved to discussion? Or not discussion, but being moved to for action later on in the meeting. Can I have a motion for that, please?
I'll move that.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so it was moved by Reckler, and I see you smiling, and it was seconded by Mr. Leon. So. Onto the vote. We're going to start with Mr. Gonzalez Hoy tonight. Mr. Gonzalez Hoy?
Thank you. Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
And you guys just go in order of your, your area after that. So Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Christian, yes.
Mr. Leon? Oh, Ms. Emiliano?
Emiliano, yes.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. All right, thank you, everybody. All right, so we're going to go on to item B7, which is approval of minutes. Are there any corrections to any of the minutes? Okay, I see no corrections to any of the minutes. Do we have any public comment on this?
Sorry, I done mute. I do see two hands up. I don't know if they're for the minutes or for regular public comments, so I'm going to give them a second to lower their hand. Now I see one and I see none. Okay, that's what I thought. Wait, one came back up.
Okay.
And now gone. No public comment. Sorry, we're good.
Okay, so there's no public comment. Can I have a motion to adopt all of the minutes together?
President Phillips, sorry to interrupt you. A hand came up right before you started speaking. I don't know if it was for the minutes as well. Sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, this is the last time. So.
I assume that it is for the minutes because of, of the individual. So I will unmute Stephanie Phillips.
Actually, it's for the next item. I apologize, trustee.
Okay, then.
Okay, all right, so no public comment. Can I have a motion to adopt all of the minutes together?
It's all moved.
All right, can I, okay, it's been moved by Reckler and seconded by Gonzalez Hoy to adopt all of the minutes together. Any discussion? All right, I see no discussion. I am going to have a little discussion. Folks who want to make the next item is general public comment. So go ahead and start raising your hand now, because I think that's what people are trying to do. So just raise it now, because that's the item that we're moving into next. I don't have any discussion. So we're going to go on to the vote, starting with Gonzalez.
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Christian, yes.
Emiliano, yes.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. So the motion carries. The next item is a general public comment. And again, this is for items and things that are not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the school district. So please raise your hand, because your hands are supposed to be up before we begin. All right, we have 12 hands anymore? Okay, let's start, Dr. Wall, 14. Let's start, Dr. Wall.
Okeydoke. All right, first one, Stephanie Phillips.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you for taking this time tonight. I'm Stephanie Phillips, the CEO of Chamberlain Education Foundation. And I just wanted to share with the board tonight, as well as the district staff, teachers, and community, that our annual gratitude grants application for public school teachers is open for one more day. This year, we're so excited to be able to double our gratitude grant giving. Specifically, we'll match every eligible teacher with a $250 grant to their school. So we're doubling our efforts. So far, over 800 teachers have already applied, and we expect that grant to be, that total grant to be over $400,000 for our schools and for our teachers. On behalf of the entire Chamberlain Education team, we really want to thank teachers for all that you do and all that you've done during this unprecedented time and encourage you to share this opportunity with teachers across our community. Visit Chamberlain Family, I'm sorry, ChamberlainFoundation.org to apply for a gratitude grant by tomorrow at midnight. And please encourage other teachers to do the same. We really appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next public comment, and I'll remind folks, if you could, please have a first and last name when you are raising your hand, but the next one is Constance. You may unmute. We'll come back to.
Okay, yeah, I was trying to not, I was trying to not have my hand raised and it stayed up, so.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, our next public comment is Kelly McLaren. You may unmute.
Hi, my name is Kelly McLaren. I'm the parent of two kids in the district. I am concerned because we were promised that all kids would be allowed to return to school on April the 19th. However, our school has informed us that no teachers are volunteering to return to school for the spring, which we were promised. I'm very concerned that nothing's going to happen either at this point for the fall, since we've done nothing for the spring. And I'm just hoping that we get a clear plan from the board soon, so we know what's going to happen with our students for the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Ramsey Hootman.
Hi, um, do you know what's worse than being told that your children are among the only children in California who won't be going back to school this spring? It's being promised that your children will return. It's taking your kids' school shopping to celebrate. It's working through the transition with the psychologist your child sees to cope with his distance learning anxiety and then finding out at the last minute that, oh, wait, you have to figure out how to tell your kids that only one of them will probably get to return. Dr. Wald promised that every child in WCCUSD who wanted to go back to the classroom would go back. My fifth grader's teacher is coming back, so he gets to go to school. My second grader's teacher is not. We were promised there would be staff in the classroom to handle this, but there is not. So my child who actually needs to go to school, who actually needs to be with his peers, will remain at home while his big brother goes to school without him. I've given up on getting my second grader into school this spring. This district has utterly failed him in every step. But I will not accept this chaos and broken promises in the fall. This is unacceptable. Please, let's use this spring as a learning opportunity for success. Let's get this on the agenda and start working on it now.
Our next speaker is Susan Malloy.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm a WCCUSD parent, and I'm very dismayed that the spring and fall reopening are not even on the agenda of this meeting when there is so much uncertainty on these topics. Our understanding was that the spring reopening would offer a space for every student who wanted to return and that which we should not be concerned about the possible shortage of teachers. This has proven to be completely unfounded. My high school son is desperate to go back and will not be able to with less than 20 teachers returning to his school, serving less than 200 students, and no plans to expand this further. I'm aware of many other schools around the district with disparities in what they are offering to students, which seems to undermine the supposed focus on equity that the plan was supposed to have. Our biggest concern is for the fall. You say you're committed to a return to in-person school for fall, but we haven't seen any evidence that planning is underway to make this happen. I urge you to start developing plans now with contingencies for changes in the level of COVID cases, anticipated teacher retirements, refusals to vaccinate, and so on. These plans should be announced publicly with plenty of time for community input. Site administrators should commit to implementing the plans as adopted, and all of this should be tied to deadlines and milestones so that there is some level of accountability. The spring reopening plan that was adopted is nothing like what is being rolled out now. The community needs transparency and planning to rebuild trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Isabel Munoz.
Hi, yes, I wanted to echo some of the parents' concerns with return to school. It sounds like there's some confusion going around on the reopening plan, and some schools are still struggling to find staff. My preschooler was extremely excited to finally get to go to school in person or at least see his peers. We were looking forward to hubs, but unfortunately, we've been informed that even though we were ready and willing to go to school, we've been denied. So I'm just disappointed. Just very disappointed. It's heart-wrenching to see my preschooler have to be put in front of a screen, learning with 30 minutes of Zoom and just, you know, YouTube videos and, you know, he's a four-year-old kid, man, you know, and it's just hard enough to get him to be excited about school, and it's just been one thing after another. And, and that's all I have to say is just it's sad that this isn't on the agenda, because a lot of families are, are suffering, they're, they're suffering right now with this.
Our next speaker is, I don't have a first name, Stacy. You may unmute.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I again am another parent who is very concerned about this spring plan that we have spent hours and hours and hours in these meetings waiting to hear, to not hear anything. My daughter is 14 years old at Penole Middle with an IEP, and she has not been invited back to school either. So I, I really want to know what kids this is serving, if it's not even serving children that have had an IEP since first grade. Who are we serving here? Thank you.
Yeah, our next speaker is Zalon Harrison.
Good afternoon, board. I have a big concern that I really need this board to address. I attended a meeting on April 1st about the development of our black school. And this lady named Linda Gonzalez, I might be butchering her name, was supposed to be over the development. If this board allows that to happen, there is no equity in the black schools. Black parents did not agree that we wanted that team that has been put together by the district, the superintendent to go forth, and I feel that there is not enough black parents' voice on how this school is going to be developed, if that's going to be the team that develops it. Can this board please look into that and make sure that black parents and black students have equity? And we do not want to tell our children that others led the development of our black school. We want black leaders. I feel Janet Scott would be a good person. Dr. Janet Scott would be very good to be one of those people to consider if you guys haven't considered someone, but please get involved in that development and planning, because the way it looks right now, there is no equity in the develop, with that team that's developing the black school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Asado Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. This is Asado Wilson, Richmond High School, ethnic studies teacher, member of UTR, as a executive board member and treasurer and president of the Black Educators Network. I was going to say something earlier, but I'm actually, I just wanted to address something about the confusion regarding the reopening on Monday. I highly recommend that everyone that is watching this to go back and watch the video from these meetings before. These meetings were long. There were a lot of comments, and I think the information was very clear as to what was going to happen. And speaking from an educator perspective, teachers were, had the option of returning to school, or it was voluntary. This was not mandated. So if the teacher's not returning, but returning, there is a reason. So it was voluntary. Now, the presentation that was, took place regarding this reopening expressed what happens if you don't have enough staff members. Not going to go into details, and honestly, I can't remember it verbatim, but highly recommend you go back and watch that portion of video and explains all of that. It explains what will happen if, you know, sites don't have enough teachers and what are the quote-unquote plans in place to do that. So I highly recommend that everyone that's out there complaining right now, go back and please watch the video. All the information is there. That's all you need to do. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jose De León.
Good afternoon, board superintendent. So first of all, I'd like to thank all the work that has been happening to open up this voluntary program in the district. The administrators have been working in a very reduced time to include as many students that want to volunteer to come back to school, teachers, and classified employees while looking at summer programs and planning towards the fall. So I'd like to recognize the immense amount of work that's going on on the sites to get as much possible for students in the spring and looking forward for the summer and the fall. It is some very rough seas right now, navigating this pandemic, and we're hoping that we can see some clear skies coming up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is William McGee.
Good evening, board, superintendent, staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Just wanting to give you all a quick update. We put it in the Friday memo for you all, as well as we've invited parents guardian. We are hosting a workshop this Saturday with Ms. Selena Jackson. She is going to be talking to our community about anxious and restless students at home. This was spurned because of our black parents reaching out, saying that they wanted a little bit more support and some techniques on working with their children during distance learning. So this is a direct result of the collaboration between the AACT and the ASSTAT and OASDA. So board, if you're able to come out, please do so. We have the flyer online. Our communication team was great with this flyer, and we've been advertising it for the entire community, so that we can continue with our parent engagement and our workshops. And then we do have a plethora of items coming up that we will be putting in the Friday memo for you all, as well as for the community. So again, thank you, guys, and we appreciate you, and we hope everybody stands help.
Our next speaker is Jean Fincher. You may unmute.
Hello, I wanted to thank the board and all of the unions for our return to spring agreement. There are a number of hubs opening at my school. There are a number of intervention groups opening at my school, and it's awesome. It's amazing. And we're excited to be able to get back into the classroom and serve those students that are in those situations. I also wanted to request that the board consider, or the district consider, maybe possibly putting their agenda in Spanish, other than on the platform where you have to click a little thing that says English, Spanish up at the top. That's confusing for our Spanish-only speaking families, and it makes it kind of hard for them to be able to participate in the board, board meetings if they can't easily get to the agenda, because they have to click on things that are in English and they don't know what to do. So I'm hoping maybe you guys can put out a link or something to make it easier for us to share with those families.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Bean.
Good evening, board and Mr. Duffy. I'm a teacher of fourth grade at Shannon Elementary. And two issues. Number one, I've heard that a waiver for standardized testing will be on the superintendent's report tonight. I'm looking forward to that, so that I did not have to spend three weeks of my last eight weeks of school giving tests that are not very valuable. Second, I am looking forward to returning to teach my students in person next week. I have enough students who are interested, enough families interested, that it makes sense for me to do. But I can envision a lot of situations in which I would not return given the current conditions and given the needs of students. So I urge the community to be patient and understanding of teachers who make the decision to not return to in-person instruction. It's not because they are lazy or don't want to do their job. It's because they may very well know things about education and about the needs of their students that make it not make sense to do that for these last seven and a half weeks of school. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Our next public speaker is Jesse Montano.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Jesse Montana, the father of two young children in the district. First and foremost, thank you. I know there's been a lot of hard work that has gone into the proposal of spring reopening from both, you know, from the teachers, the unions, commitment, you know, from, from the district and so on. Very grateful. However, families that wanted to go back, that were promised, are not all getting the ability to go back. My kids are a couple of the lucky ones that are getting back into school. But I have to say that it's been chaotic, and my school is not even disseminating information at the school level, really, but really at the classroom level. I think we do need leadership from both the district and principal level. My kids do get to go back a few hours, but not sure what the opportunity is for the intervention program, nor the Thursday, Friday afternoon program. I understand completely that teacher support is voluntary, and there are several, you know, reasons why teachers may not elect to go back. I, I personally don't feel that it's because of laziness or any, you know, those reasons that have been mentioned. But I do think that there is a firm commitment from the district to see what additional staff support we can get for kids and families that are looking to go back. So what is it that the district is doing to continue to get those numbers up? Also think we need more information about the summer programs. And lastly, while a statement about fall is good, we do need a firm commitment and plan for full reopening. We need to start working with the teachers, principals, and schools now and getting a clear and crisp communication tracking progress as we approach both summer and the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last public speaker is Katie Rohan.
Hey, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, for those of us who stayed up well past our bedtimes after a long workday, we watched as Dr. Wald, with a huge smile on his face, assured us that every child who wanted to go back would have the opportunity to do so. Mr. Phillips, Ms. Reckler, they tried hard to poke holes in that statement, yet he kept his smile broad. He kept assuring us that all the levers would be pulled to make it happen. Now, no, he never promised students would get to go back with their teacher, but they would get back, get to go back to school. This is clearly not the case. I'm lucky that my school seems to be one of the only ones that's making it work, and for that, I'm so thankful. I'm thankful to my school, to its teachers, to its principal, but for my neighbors out there, I just couldn't stand by and let them be patronized by the prior caller, Mr. Wilson. So I hope the board is tracking just how different this reopening is from what we were promised and figures out a way to build trust in the community that isn't foreshadowing fall, because right now, none of us trust that fall is going to look like what you say it is, because this is so, so different than what you promised. Thank you.
And that was our last hand.
Thank you very much to everybody who called in. We're now going to go to item C, which is our consent.
We're now going to go to item C, which is our consent calendar. The items that have been pulled for discussion are eight, 11, and 12. People have already had an opportunity to make comments on this, and we are going to have a vote. So can I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar? There were motion to adopt the consent calendar with eight, 11, and 12, without those, right? Just to clarify. Okay, it's been moved by Gonzalez. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
I'm going to give this one to Ms. Emiliano. It was a close call, but I'm going to give this one to her. So it's been moved and seconded. Board, it's time to vote. Gonzalez, what?
Gonzalez, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Ms. Folds, yes.
Kristi, Kristi, yes.
Emiliano, yes.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. The consent calendar carries. Thank you very much, everybody. We're going to go on to item D, Board Committee and Superintendent Communication. There's only one report tonight. It's the superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm going to ask Mr. Jordan to, to pull that up. Nice to see everyone this evening. And I am going to say a couple of things in my report about the opening of school also. So we definitely see our, our folks getting ready. Here's a picture of our staff at Grant Elementary School. I believe it's, yeah, this is Grant. All right, so just before we get into the reopening, a couple of things to note. Sback changes, spring testing changes. One of the callers asked about that or spoke about that. I am going to turn this over just briefly to Mr. Aurelio to let everybody know what's happening with the changes in standardized testing, the state waiver, our decisions. And then I'll be communicating this out once we're absolutely final to our community, and so will our school. So let me turn it over to Mr. Aurelio to just give a quick update on where we are with our summative assessments.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Good evening, Board. So the state has allowed districts to turn to a local assessment in lieu of the standardized Sback system at the academic committee, and we are going to be moving forward with three to eight. So they will not be taking the Sback this spring. Our testing window will begin in May for the star reading, star math, that is assessment that our students are familiar with. They've taken it twice during the school year. It is a assessment they can do online in one session, so that we're excited about being able to utilize that assessment that students are familiar with and not bringing in for grade 11 in lieu of the Sback for grade 11. And there's an estimated to, to ensure that we allow our 11th graders to have a reading and math assessment. We are still working around the final decision with the science assessment to see if that is going to be viable for us to administer or not. And we will be bringing that decision at a later date, and we will inform everyone when we do not give the science assessment. And that is where we're at. We're also assessing nearing what we're doing with start, looking at local assessments. You know, so I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you. That was, you were breaking up a little bit there, so it wasn't that easy to hear you. And I'm not, I hope everybody did, just sharing that we have flexibility. We're not going to do the Sback this spring for grades three to eight. We are going to use our star assessments that we use throughout the year and still finishing decisions around grade 11 and science. We did host two really successful immunization clinics for our district employees over the past weeks. One sponsored by Rite Aid, another from Safeway that just enabled immunization shots to our employees. And there'll be a second one that follows up each of those, so folks can get their second shot. Grant was actually able to host an outside socially distant event on, on a weekend outside of their school, and really want to thank them for continuing to partner with this nonprofit, Francis and Schools, to help their families. And we can go to our next slide. So just wanted to share a couple of things about spring reopening. We are very, very excited to get the buildings finally opened on Monday, Monday, the 19th. It's been a long, long, long time since our school buildings have been open, and we are excited to open them. Our goal has always been to serve our students who want to return in person to school. And we've mentioned that we would do that through two criteria. One, supporting our highest need students, and those are our 5% highest needs. And the second is everyone else who wants to come to school. We're working diligently to ensure we have enough seats to support students who want to return by Monday. We're finalizing other staff, just beyond the site staff, who want to support our students, whether that's retired staff, substitutes, part-time folks who want more time, volunteers, traditional parent volunteers, et cetera, to get enough adults in our buildings to cover the students. And we're going to continue to do that, you know, as we move through the spring. And we're going to be working on it all day, you know, tomorrow, Friday. We have been doing that. As of this writing, we have 51% of certificated staff who are coming back to in-person instruction, and 83% of classified staff will be returning or already on campus. And a number of the certificated staff will be supporting multiple groups of students. And then our special education team is working directly with special education students and parents to share the seats that we can offer there based on how many adults we do have. So we are working very diligently, still our commitment to get there. We know that we haven't been able to commit to everyone as of this moment, and we are still working diligently to get there. And I really thank everybody who's been involved in that. I thank our HR team who's, you know, reached out to folks who have been laid off over the previous years to see if they are interested in returning, et cetera. So I assure you that we are shaking all the trees to have enough staff to support those students who do want to be back. We can go to our next slide. I just wanted to share about the 5% of students, and we use that as a quantity that comes from our MTSS framework, which really shows that there is a 5% that are the highest needs. And when we did all of our prioritization work and looked at all of the criteria and worked with staff and principals and others, we created that list of the first 5% of students that we would definitely assure seats to, and then continue on forward. But those students are primarily in grades K to six. As you can see there, how that's broken down, and you can, we can go to our next slide. You can also see by demographic what that 5% looks like. Predominantly Latinx and African American, which is the predominant groups in our district. But these are the 5% that we are absolutely, no matter what, ensuring that we will support while we continue to make sure we create as many seats available as possible. We can go to our next slide. You can also see there by newcomer status, socioeconomically disadvantaged, special education, et cetera. And then we can go to our next slide. So just to share a little bit more about what's upcoming next, obviously, the big thing upcoming is Monday that we're all working towards. But graduation ceremonies, we're very close to giving the go-ahead for in-person graduations on the football fields outside at sites. We're wanting to get through both just the in-person opening next week and see the final plans from the sites as they put them together, make sure they're compliant, and we can then say, yes, we are going to do socially distanced safe graduation ceremony in early June. COVID testing. So all of the athletes who are participating in sports will be tested next week. That information is going out through their coaches, but we will also send something out in the Friday letter. And our goal is to test all students and staff who are returning next week at the school sites. That was a condition of our agreement. Now that we are in orange, the frequency is not as high, so we're going to try to get everyone a baseline test next week and then work out if there's going to be another test before we leave for the school year, and we'll share that on Friday. We're full steam ahead on summer, full steam ahead on fall. And then vaccinations, as I mentioned, we're continuing, and this Friday, we have clinic number two for employees who receive their first shot through Rite Aid. So that's what's happening across the district. Many things happening, but just want to thank again all the staff working to put together school for next week. As we know, it is voluntary, so we understand folks, students or staff who are not returning, and we will continue to support people online as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Duffy. Board, are any questions? Okay, we're just going to go in the order. I see multiple here. We're just going to go in the order. So, Mr. Gonzalez, would you take it off for us?
Thank you, President Phillips, and thank you Superintendent Duffy for the report. Really appreciate it. I do have a few questions. First one, we as a board have gotten a few emails, and we heard a couple of comments tonight about some schools having zero volunteers. Could you confirm if that's true? Do we have any school with zero volunteers?
We have volunteer. Every school building will be open, and every school building will be supporting students in one way or the other. We do have, you know, we're running the gamut from some schools where we have very few students who want to return and more staff than students, and at the other end, more students than staff. So we're trying to work that all through, obviously, as quickly as we can to make sure we can ensure as many seats as possible, prioritizing, of course, our highest need students first.
Okay, thank you. Also, are we sending all of our available administrators from the central office to do hubs?
We are sending them first and foremost to partner with the school sites, so as we do the first weeks of school normally, to have them go out, see what's needed, see what's most important, and how they can help the schools. The schools might say, actually, we really need help with checking some kids in, or we really need help with, you know, something else. So we are definitely looking to have central office folks support, whether they're in a hub. As of right now, I don't know that.
Thank you. My next question, I've gotten a lot of questions about how often are we testing students who are currently playing sports?
I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Wold, who can give an update on that, on the cadence. And I believe it has now changed a touch because we're in the orange, but he can best answer that.
So the rules have changed a couple of times. When we began sports, we were required to test those in contact sports, which is football, before each and every match. When the go-ahead by CIF and TCal for indoor sports was brought, it initially was to test for every match. It has now been reduced to lesser cadence. We are still going to be testing with our league before every game for the indoor sports, basketball, and others. We had not been doing testing for the other sports. On Monday, we are testing all athletes, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Even though the MOU does not mandate for testing every student, we are going to test everyone returning over the first week to make sure that we have a baseline test, and then we'll develop a cadence for ongoing testing for our athletes as well as our students. It's not, again, it's not mandatory under CDPH, which is the California Department of Public Health, or the league. We're doing more than we're required to do, including the testing of everyone. We will have testing companies on all school sites from eight to three. They'll be setting up appointments for all of the folks, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week. And then we're also putting together protocols when needed to do the rapid testing.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Wold, for that update. My next question, Mr. Duffy, is am I right to understand that because sites are still working through their plans, there is a chance that there are families who might not know if they're going to have a spot yet because sites are still working through their plans?
That is absolutely correct. So we now have, you know, every day, we have people come forward and say, hey, I'd like to work. We have about 90 substitutes who've responded to our calls, who normally substitute out in schools. We've assigned some of them out. We have a big session tomorrow to assign more. So yes, we may have many folks who could receive a call that there, we have the opportunity to, to serve them, and we, we don't plan on stopping. So anytime we can get extra staff and we can open something more, we will definitely do that. I know it provokes a lot of anxiety because we're so close to Monday. But, you know, we're working as fast as we can.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy. My last question for you is, what do you need from us in order to move forward with local assessments instead of the Sback?
Got it. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Aurelio. I think we do need direction from the Board. We didn't bring this as a, an action item. We're hoping that you'll support that direction to move away from the Sback for this year and sort of follow the state guidance or the state lead. They've applied for that flexibility, and now we have it as well. So, you know, we don't have the full package there in front of you because we didn't, we haven't finished the 11th grade and the the science. Thank you. But we do, we would, you know, like the Board to, to support this move around moving away from the Sback, especially in grades three to eight. And I'm sorry, I didn't write it that way because it's my superintendent's report, but we do hope you will support that.
Mr. Aurelio, we're going to say something? Sorry.
No, I think Mr. Duffy covered it, basically. Yes.
Okay, okay, great. Well, President Phillips has my last question. Since we have to give direction, I do have a comment on that, but I'll wait until we come back. Thank you.
We are, and I'm sorry, when we get to, we're going to do discussion, we're going to public comment and discussion, and when we get to the discussion portion, I'll, I'll ask you all, you know, if there are any objections to that. And also say that this was actually the recommendation of the academic subcommittee. It didn't come out of the sky. So we're going to move on to the next person. I think that's Reckler.
Yep, I believe that's me. So before we move off of testing, would you be able to reiterate the dates that we think this is happening?
That, so we have two testings, right? We have the testing for all who are returning, and then we have the testing of the athletes.
Oh, no, 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 talking about.
Academic, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's why I came off camera for a minute. I'm like, wait, which testing? So, sorry. So our star testing window, we have a spring window.
We should do both at the same time. We could do, yeah.
That's true. No swab and type on the computer. So the window is in May. It's an extended window. Basically, the month of May is when we will do star reading and star math for grades three to eight. STAR reading and STAR math for grades three to eight. That is not a change. We've had that window in place all year. But we'll get to utilize that, the results of that assessment. The, the local has to be able to be reported. So the STAR platform does allow us to provide reports to families. So we can show the results and does allow us to disaggregate the data by school, by race, by gender, but you know, all the different categories you need to disaggregate data. And to report to both the board and the community, the results. That's why we're, we want to do the STAR assessment.
Okay. And what was the date for S back for eleventh grade? If you.
So. So S back, the, the window was extended into the end of June. Obviously, getting eleventh graders tested. Once school is over will be a challenge. So we, we would like to fast track. Bringing STAR, STAR reading and STAR math. So we can do that. That will allow us to do eleventh grade in essentially two sessions online. There is, we are discussing, even if we do STAR for eleventh grade. Having an option for eleventh graders to still take S back if they so, if they want to do that. The reason being that the eleventh grade S back is also one way to show. You're, that you are eligible via the EAP, which allows you to show for college readiness, that you are college ready. There's other ways as well. That's just one factor, test scores, but grades, course completion are other factors that play into that.
Okay, and S back is free?
S back is, is free.
Okay, and stars, the thirty five thousand?
STAR would be an amendment to the contract we already have to add eleventh grade.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to get back to the return to school. I just figured I'd finish up with trustee Gunn's follow us away left off. So back to the return to school. First, I wanted to thank everybody for the heavy lift. You know. Really, really thank you to, to everyone. And now to a couple of questions. Superintendent Duffy, could you please explain to the home audience who may not know what certificated is and what classified is?
Sure. So our certificated, that's a term we use to describe our certificated employees. They have a classroom. Certificate or a. Kind of, they, they are legally able to lead a class. Those are generally our teachers, our. Counselors, librarians, psychologists, but the bulk of them are our teachers. Classified are what you might know as your service workers. They are all the folks who support us. Nutrition services and custodians and instructional aides and front office folks. That way, those are our two, they make up the biggest part of the district, almost over ninety percent of the employees. I should say. You know, Mr. Gonzalez asked me about all schools being open and they are, and that does show that one hundred percent of site principals. Will be on site and we really thank them for that commitment as well.
Okay, and then back to that slide. So certificated, meaning teachers or librarians, these are, I believe that was at fifty three percent?
Yeah, fifty one right now.
Fifty one, okay. And so those, you have to have a certificated. Can you explain what needs to be in the classroom?
Right. So right now in class, really, there's basically two options. Either the teacher's going to be back in their class. Doing one of two things, working with students in an intervention model. Outside of the school day or supporting their students during the school day. And the students who are at home, they're zooming out to those students, generally speaking. And if the teacher is at home, then students will be able to come in and that classroom, they will be supervised. By, and by two adults. That does not have to be a certificated staff member. The certificated staff member who is of record is still the certificated staff member at home, the teacher who's zooming from home. And students are getting their distance learning supervised by. You know, another type of employee. Or could be also we're working all of our third party, we call them, like our after school providers who are on campus. They can also support. You know, a school may have hired a coach who's on campus or even parent volunteers who've been badged and fingerprinted. Are able to come in and support in that way, too.
Okay. Thank you. I have a couple of schools that have what I will describe as a donut hole in the middle of them. So they've got like a K one, but their two, three, four is. Not showing up at all. And then maybe they have a five, six.
Well, we meet every day to try to figure it out and see who else can go to those sites and who else we have. So, you know, we're just continuing the work to try to match supply and demand. As quickly as we can. I know that doesn't make it easy when it's fairly uneven. Across the board. So we're going to just keep working at it.
Can those families go to a different site if you have schools that have no one?
Possibly, possibly. We, we're still working through that. We may have a couple of sites that have that kind of availability. We just want to make sure. We have done our due diligence at those sites to make sure we've, you know, called every student and tried to get in touch with everybody there. Before we let the seat go to somebody from a different school.
Are schools tracking who wants to come back but can't?
Yes.
So there's lists that they have?
Yes.
Okay. And then. So you will add families later in time?
Yes, absolutely. If we can, we certainly will. And we anticipate that that may be the case. It may be that somebody. Finally has a second vaccination and they feel more comfortable coming in so that that's done. Or they may have, you know, a home care issue because there are surrounding districts like Oakland. I'm a parent in Oakland. My seventh grader has no chance to return there. So somebody is taking care of him here. So as people work towards figuring out childcare, I think they'll make their way in also. So I think there's still some. Extenuating circumstances that people are trying to work through.
And would you consider, I've, I've read a number, our schools have published a number of different things. Let's see, how do I want to say this? So would you consider, I mean, I read one thing which was. You know, if somebody drops out of a cohort, that's it. It's just closed. They're not going to take any other kids. Would that be reconsidered?
That could be reconsidered, yes. I think we want to just try to make sure. What we're doing is very even, so we don't have kids coming every single day. Or going. So I think that's something, you know, we could certainly look at and reconsider. Right now, we've just been trying to ask for this, you know, clear commitment from families for this, this last seven, eight weeks. If they want to do that, to make that commitment. But if we do see a dropout. I think that's something we can definitely consider.
And where do parents that are badged, where do they report their willingness?
To their principal. We're really trying to manage that through the site. So if they want to come in. And support and the site and the district have gone through all other avenues, all other employees. We've, you know, looked at our layoff lists and everything else. We're more than happy to have a parent come in and be that second person in a room to support us.
Are we going to qualify for SB eighty six?
Yes, we believe so. I can turn that over, of course, to Dr. Wold, who actually did a lot of work on that today. With some state leaders around it. We do think we will. And I'll let him share a few of those details.
So we, we had been looking at all the different pieces in the legislation. The first part is identifying those most at risk and providing all opportunity. We have met that criteria completely. We then needed to determine how is it going to be assessed by the state? What is offering law and to the greatest extent possible? That's the language within the law. And we do need to assure that we have reached out and offered to all of our stakeholders. And then it's a matter of. Exhausting every possible option to provide them support. So we're going through every single employee. We're using providers. We're looking at any of our subs. And once we've exhausted every available staff member, as long as we can document that we've done that. We would be compliant with AB eighty six based on the way the audit would be reviewing it. We reviewed this with school services directly. We actually talked to several folks and capital advisors as well as our auditor, Kristy White. Who will be the one that ultimately has to assess the documentation. And we're making sure we gather that documentation. So we're not ready today to say that, but we're hoping by. Maybe as early as Friday to say, yes, we feel we have the documentation in place to say we're going to make AB eighty six.
Okay, if you make the cutoff for the Friday memo, can that please go in the Friday memo?
We, we will do our best to do that, but we're going to want that independent verification as well because we want to make sure we're doing this the right way.
And how much do you think?
No, I'm sorry.
And how much do you think we're going to get?
We would get approximately eight million dollars from the state. Because we did not start on April first, so there is a small penalty. And we're anticipating receiving ninety percent of the funds.
And that's just the spring portion?
Correct. We're not talking at all about SB eighty six, which is the extended learning. And the two differences, this is.
I'm sorry, I made a mistake. I said, I said SB instead of AB. I apologize for that.
Right. This is the AB eighty six, which is the in-person instruction grant. The other one is the Extended Learning Opportunities Grant. Not to go in the weeds, but there are different resource numbers for each and we're actually coding and tracking everything based on those programs.
Okay, and then. So what? What should we be telling families that are sending us all these emails and disappointed and?
That we are still working to find an option for each and every one of them. We understand the frustrations that everyone has, but the, the reality is there are a lot of circumstances and so we'll continue to state. Space and grace and allow us to get those that are here situated. And then continue to look at each and every possible option that we can augment. We might not get everyone on Monday. It might be Tuesday that we add another hub or add another one or are able to get another provider on boarded. And so we're going to continue to do this work. We're doing it as expeditiously and as effectively as we can. We say let their principal know they're interested. Stay on that list.
And so, and then just clearly, is there a cutoff date? Like, let's suppose, I mean, down to week four, week three? People come online? I mean, is there?
At this point, I mean, I think the thing we're most worried about was that students who have signed up. Are in and out, in and out, because we know how badly that other students want to be there. So we are asking for that firm commitment that if you are coming, you are coming the whole time. But if we still check with families and they want to be there for the last three or four weeks and something has opened that we can do that. We'll do everything we can to, because I think the connection is really important.
And is the, actually, well, that's a good point. I was actually thinking of it the other way, that if, okay, you know, staff. Oh, I got my vaccine or I got my second vaccine or we're in the yellow tier or whatever the excuses is people come on, would you continue to? Is there going to be a cutoff when it's done or is it just going to roll through?
No, I mean, if we can open something new and it, it's mutually beneficial for everyone with three or four weeks left and. There's a new teacher who comes on board and a new set of students want to be, do that, even though it's a short amount of time, we'll definitely do it.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. It's my fault.
Superintendent Duffy, you said all teachers will have a secondary person in the room? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
And then you said there's going to be two adults in every room, even if it's not a teacher there? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, and then Dr. Wold and Safety and Climate Committee, did you speak to there being no parent volunteers on campuses? Was that accurate?
So we, we talked about there being no visitors on campus. We may be in a position where some of our badge volunteers. May be the way we get that second adult in in some cases. And the principals will be working with those, but there won't be visitors where you're just coming to visit.
So these volunteers, these parent volunteers, they will not get paid. They're just volunteering, correct?
Correct.
Do they have to be vaccinated?
That's what, yes. They have to have at least the first shot, similar to what is. Expected for. Our, as part of our current agreement, we've also said that they have to have the permission of the teacher to work with them. So we've set out some criteria to make sure it's a. It's a working relationship and that it's safe and healthy.
And according to the agreement that was signed, these hubs are locked on Monday, correct? You're not going to bring a new kid into a hub. It's locked. So whatever ten to fifteen kids that are in that, it's locked for that period. Is that accurate?
Yes and no. I think that's part of the question that trustee Reckler was asking. If, you know, we see on Monday that there's only four kids who have come. And we know that there's demand, I think we will reach out to other families and say, hey, there is space. Just as we often see on the first day of school when we may expect students to be there and they're not there. We'll make those adjustments, but as we move forward, I think we're more likely to open new hubs than just keep adding kids here or there.
Once it hits its number, it's locked, correct?
Yes, that is true.
Once it hits its number, it's locked. No one's going to be added. And if someone drops out, right? Is that what you're saying? Or if I'm at a number of ten and then two kids dropped out, I'm going to put two new kids in?
We haven't specified that on the ten to eight because we haven't anticipated that kind of dropout. So I think we're going to work school by school with that. We have wanted to avoid, you know, trying to add kids. Single kids throughout and we do want to try to keep the cohorts as stable and pure for as long as possible. But we haven't made a hard and fast rule of yes or no on that.
Okay, of the one thousand four hundred and eighty six students, how many of those students have agreed to come back?
I don't have that number in front of me. We can definitely get it to you.
Okay, and I would also like the number of the four hundred and ninety six, four hundred and ninety seven black students. How many of those students are coming back? And the eight hundred and thirty seven of our Latinx students, how many of those students are coming back? Can you put a graph up that shows what all schools are offering for transparency to our committee or our community?
I can't in a way that looks probably aesthetically pleasing for you. We have it in internal spreadsheets of what everybody's doing and some of that continues to change based on. You know, if a whole set of new staff are suddenly there and they think they can do more. But we do have it and I'm happy to share that with you as we clean it up a little bit. Across the fifty five different schools and programs.
Okay, what supporters site principals telling you that they need to be prepared for Monday?
A lot, transparently. They are just doing their due diligence. They've been tremendous. They're asking a lot of questions. We. We met with them Monday, we've met with them Tuesday, we're meeting with them tomorrow. Just going over everything from things like drop off to, you know, what happens if a student, you know, is sick? To can this person staff this kind of a room? Can I use this person? Can I shift this? So they're asking lots of different questions, some they're in very different places. Some of them have their staff set, but may have some operational questions. Others have staffing questions. So we're trying to work with them individually and as a group. So they're, they're trying to get as ready as they can and we're trying to give them as much support as possible.
Do subs need to have a vaccine? Or other outside staff need to have a vaccine that you're called, that you may call in?
Certi- the agreement read that certificated staff needed to have a vaccine. And that's what we're going with on the agreement. We have those said for parent volunteers, we would like them to have at least the first shot. But right now, the way the agreement read, it was certificated, because I think there was a particular concern among the certificated unions about vaccinations.
So when the state takes away the colored tiers, what matrix will the district use to make some of its decisions?
I think the best thing to do, and we haven't fully made these decisions, but I think we need to strictly follow CDPH and county guidelines. We just need to follow the California Department of Public Health and county guidelines. And when they say go, we go, and they say stop, we stop. We still have to negotiate some agreements for the fall, but that would certainly be my suggestion and lesson learned through this process is to stay as closely aligned with state and county regulations as we can.
And that was in our COVID prevention plan, that we will follow the strictest of the three. So you have the, um, CT, you have the CDC at the national level, you have California Department of Public Health, and then you have county public health. At times, they have conflicting direction. We take the one that is the most restrictive and that's where we're gonna maintain between those three.
Okay, what will your PD entail on Friday? What will, what will be happening on Friday when you have your professional development?
Yep, Friday is gonna be broken up into two parts. So Friday, there still will be a homeroom period or advisory period for students in the morning. Then after that advisory period, staffs will have PD. And the first block of that time will be with their staffs. So they'll be reviewing as a team, as a staff, here's what school is gonna look like, here's how we're gonna greet kids, here's how they're gonna come in, here's how they're gonna come out, here's how they're gonna take breaks, they'll do very site-based, site-specific things. However, we are providing a PowerPoint deck for each school site that has key points. We do want the principals to talk about with their staffs, but it's their time. And in the afternoon, we're doing more job-specific professional learning. So on the third Fridays of the month, we usually do a personalized PD using this tool called Sched, where people can go in and select their PDs. So at that time in the afternoon, if a teacher wants to do more work on tech tools, because they really need that, they can go there. We'll have a specific training for our CSOs. If teachers wanna do something about social emotional learning and building community on these first days, they can do that. So we're trying to personalize a set of offerings for the different employee groups. And then for single employee groups, give them a few options for what they think they'll need best for Monday.
When we're scheduling testing, can we please keep in mind, and here's a question, when we're scheduling testing, can we please keep in mind that some of our students are in the midst of Ramadan? And that has an effect on testing because of the fasting and other things that go along with Ramadan? So just keeping that on the forefront. And then did the end of school day move, the date move? Was it on the fourth and now it's on the ninth? Or is that just something that I'm fuzzy about? Was it always on the ninth, the end of, the last day of school, always on the ninth this year?
Yes.
Okay, it was never on the fourth?
No.
Okay, and then last couple of questions is what, when are the forms going to be sent to families? And what are those forms going to entail, the spring coming back forms?
So many have been sent already. We gave sites very specific language that they could use. And then they finished crafting their own surveys to get out based on the very specific model that they were gonna have, so they could share. So if a school site hasn't, if you know of a site, maybe that you're feeling like, I don't think this is out, please let me know that, you know, separately, personally, we need to follow up there. Because many of them went out last week, have been going out through this week as they solidify plans, as they know more about staffing. So everything really should be out at this point. If not, we're meeting again with folks tomorrow, so I'll double check to make sure. But I'm also open, if you need to follow up with me personally about a specific site or a community, we can do that too.
And what are those forms that have been sent out to parents? So is it a, here's the rules? Is it a, here's a liability form? What are those specific forms that have been sent out to families?
No, those have not been sent out to families.
That's the ones I'm talking about, yes, so those forms.
No, those haven't. So there are three things and I, my team can help chime in here, but my, there are three things that folks will get. So sorry, when you were talking, I was talking about just like the intent to return, like I want to return. But families will have two forms that they will need to sign. One is a, and I'm gonna need some help here from my team, a COVID liability release. And the second is an acknowledgement of the safety procedures that they need to follow and we're asking them to follow. So those two, and then we are going to be sending also a family handbook that gives basically guidance on what to expect. So two, they would have to sign to show they understand what the expectations are of the school and the asks are of the family in terms of making sure students are healthy and safe. And then the handbook, so hopefully I have that right.
And those are the, those are the two electronic signatures. We've set them up where they can do it electronic. We will have hard copies available for those that don't want to do the e-sign. The third thing, as they do their COVID testing, they'll be set up online to do all of that information one time, so that the results can be returned to them as well as to us electronically. So that'll be the third thing that'll happen.
So hard copies are available for those families that don't have a, a home computer or they can do it from their child's laptop, correct?
Correct, that's the plan is that in most cases, they would be able to do it right there on the Chromebook, if necessary, and submit it right, right immediately.
Okay, and as we talked before, I just wanna make sure that there's clear explanation about what these forms mean when we're asking parents to sign off. That means it needs to be done in multiple languages, even a video explaining what exactly people are signing. And then the very last thing I have is I just want to hear you tell me again what supports we're giving to our principals and sites to be able to answer all of the questions when they have parents emailing them, why can't this child or that child be able to come to school? What supports are we giving our admin for that?
Well, I mean, we're, we're continuing to just try to meet with them and be available for them. You know, we have been in so many sessions together where it's just like this question and this question and this question. And okay, here's how we'd answer that, here's how we'd answer that. They have multiple PowerPoint decks, they have an administrator's handbook. We know even that's not enough, there feels like this endless kind of dearth of information. There'll be a central office partner at every school on Monday to support them and see what else they need. I think we'll learn a lot Monday as they go through their first day and come out and say, okay, these things went really well, but this is something that we still need help with, whether it's a piece of PPE or a procedure. So we're trying our best to, to give them as much support. They have been absolutely fantastic, they're doing three things at one time, planning spring, planning summer, planning fall. So I think they're gonna do a great job on Monday, I really do. But we're gonna meet with them again tomorrow to try to go over things one last time before they see their staffs on Friday.
Okay, so what I heard was you're gonna let principals say, call the superintendent, he'll help you.
Yes, they all, I mean, they do, we get many emails to our team. Julio Franco and Anne Shin, who are the leads around operations, have been great. They're go-to people for the principals. Principals know how to reach out to Tracy and her team for technology, Kristen and her team about special education. So if we know the answer, we get it to them. Sometimes we just still don't know and we're still working through it.
All right, perfect, thank you, trustee Phillips, or President Phillips, that's all of my questions.
Mr. Christian.
All right, thank you, President Phillips. Just a few things I wanna ask. The first one is about the custodians, are all the custodians in the district ready to go? And do they have the supplies and the things they need to be able to use on their site to make sure that the cleaning is done throughout the day?
Yes, and I'm gonna ask Louis Fries to join us for that, who's been working really diligently on it. I believe they all do. I think there's a couple last things that are like backordered. I think they're all in there now, there were a few hand sanitizers where we didn't have the refills yet. But I believe they do have everything that they need and-
And I can confirm that training has been done for the custodians and all supplies are delivered to the school site. And we've been doing many walks around the district, inspecting schools and supplies are in the classrooms and extra supplies are in the custodial rooms.
Okay. And, and then the other part, we'll go with that is the restroom, would the restroom be maintained throughout the day or?
Yes, the restrooms will be maintained throughout the day. Part of what the training was about is how to take care of and wipe down surfaces throughout the day. In fact, to help facilitate that, we were looking at bringing in our custodial staff in the evening shift earlier during the day. So we have an overlap between the day custodians and the evening custodians to help out with the, with that function.
All right, thank you on that one. And then the next one, we'll go to, to the CSOs, do all the CSOs in, in our district has all the proper things they need?
Uh, well, we are doing a training for the CSOs on Friday as part of the session Friday afternoon. We think for sure on the PPE, they have everything that they need. Just need to go over with them one last time, reminders about social distancing, just reminders that we wanna be supportive of our students, you know, as things happen, a mask falls below the nose, you know, et cetera. So I, we think they're good to go, many of them. If not all of them, have been working and are some of the most experienced people so far, because they've been out at the lunch lines and at sites. So they are, they can probably teach some of the incoming staff a thing or two about how to be in the COVID world.
Okay, and then the other part will be with that is, and on mask wearing is, it sometimes becomes very difficult and so forth. Sometimes people wanna, I'll call it the saggy mask, that sags.
Yeah.
And, but the mask must be above, cover your nose, mouth, all the way down. So, but there are gonna be those who are gonna try to sag their mask. So what rules or regulations is to regulate that?
We do have a policy on that, that we've been working on and have reviewed with our administrators. You know, when you think of it more in a discipline area, like we have had to talk to you about this multiple times about your mask. So we have given guidance to our administrators on how to handle that. Again, we, you know, are trying not to be really punitive here, but at the same time, we can't put people in danger. So I know you have personally been working with students over the last number of weeks. So we would also, you know, take any advice that, that you have. And, you know, if you wanna come to that CSO meeting and share any thoughts, because you've been working directly with students about what's worked, to help them, you know, follow those really important directions, that would be great.
Okay, and the next one will be as far as, well, actually, that, that, that was, that'd be the last one, the last question I have, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Milliano, any question?
Yes, I have a question regarding the testing of student athletes. Would that testing be open to, is it only open to students who are coming back for sports, such as students involved in season two? Or are we, is that also going to be open for students who were involved in the first season, which I believe ended last week?
You know, I, that's a good ques- go ahead, sorry.
So we would be testing all athletes that are participating in a sport. If the, there was, if there happened to have been an athlete that participated in season one, is not participating in season two and is not participating in the on-campus in-person instruction, but wanted to get tested for whatever purpose, we certainly would not turn that athlete away. But we wouldn't have planned to have asked them in, because they're not coming back to the site.
And then also just a little bit of clarification regarding the eleventh grade testing. The STAR test would replace the S-Back, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Leon?
Yes, thank you, President Phillips. My first question is like, how often would the testing be done for students returning and the student athletes?
So for those participating in contact sports or inside sports like basketball, volleyball, they would be tested before every game. They also, right now, the league will not allow spectators to the indoor sports in any way whatsoever there. And they do have the strict testing. For the other athletes, we have not determined the cadence, whether it's gonna be every week, every other week. We'll work on defining based on the results that we get from this round, how often we want to and need to test. We can say this in football, we did not have a positive test of an athlete. We had two that were indeterminate, they were retested and they were not positive. So we, we were very lucky in this round. We don't anticipate that luck to continue. There's going to be, with the amount of testing we're gonna do, there's gonna be some positive tests and we have protocols in place for that, and then we'll determine the cadence after that.
Okay, and like would a mobile, like clinic come over or like do athletes need to like travel to the clinic to get tested?
No, we have, we have contracted, the board allowed us to contract with multiple support providers for this, multiple firms, and we will have them on our campuses. So the testing will be done there.
Okay, thank you, those are all my questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leon, thank you everybody for your questions. First thing I wanna say is if the public, because we are gonna do public comment on this, so if the public has something that they wanna say, you all can begin raising your hands now. So you're caught in the zone. So just start raising your hands now if you have comments. Is there a reason why we gave families until Wednesday to complete the return to school survey? Why did we just give them three days?
Uh, we didn't give family, you're talking about until today, this Wednesday?
I, yes, I mean, what I saw and my wife saw was basically fill this out by Wednesday.
So I do know that sites are asking families to turn that around as quickly as possible. You know, but if something comes back after Wednesday, the goal is not to say, oops, sorry, we didn't hear from you. We're just trying, because we are operating on such a tight timeline, to get a- We're just trying because we are operating on such a tight timeline to get as much info as possible as soon as we can.
So what are you going to do to make sure that the parents know that if they saw the survey on Tuesday and didn't get it in by Wednesday, that they can still submit it?
We can send out a reminder to families that lets them know if you haven't had a chance to notify us, we will take your notification any way we can get it.
Okay, can you also let the individual sites know? And I'm sure it wasn't intentional, but can you also let the individual sites know what the proper messaging is, that it is not a Wednesday cutoff, based on what you're saying?
We can do that.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Right now, we have nine people in Zoom raising their hands. If anybody else wants to raise it, now's the time. Okay, we just got to 10. So we have 10 people in public comment. Dr. Wall, please begin.
Okay. First one, Kelly McLaren.
Hi, I spoke a little bit earlier, but I wanted to just clarify a couple of things. For when we talked about the school reopening in spring, my understanding was middle and high school kids would be offered an eight o'clock until around two o'clock program. My school is offering an eight o'clock to 10 o'clock for intervention and then nothing from 12 until 12:30. And then they're going back for another hour and a half and then they're doing another hour and a half after that. I'm not really sure how that's supposed to work logistically for parents to get their kids to that school. I also know of parents that have IEPs that have not been offered any return to school at all for the Penole Middle School, which is quite concerning because I was thought those were the kids that were supposed to be offered a spot back in school. However, no one has called her at all regarding her students. Once again, I'm just still waiting to hear something about the fall, which is what I'm most concerned about since we've heard nothing about opening for the fall at this point. And parents do not trust the district at all and they really need to see something writing about the fall so they can get their kids enrolled somewhere else if we're not going to make that happen for them. Thank you.
You, our next speaker is Ramsey Hootman.
Hi, I just wanted to clarify, Superintendent Duffy said that schools were keeping lists of kids who wanted to attend. So if new spots opened up, they would be notified. This was not the case for me. I'm a parent at Harding and the survey I was sent said that for my second grader, the only option that was available was the after school intervention for like IEP kids and that there would be no court instruction period offered. So I was not put on any list and parents were not asked if they were interested in case staff became available. So that really needs to be clarified. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Denise Steen.
Hi, President Phillips, board trustees, thank you for your time. I want to send a shout out to Collins Elementary and to my community, my teachers, my staff. We have pulled together an amazing plan and we are reaching out to every parent who wants the opportunity to come back, whether it's in a study hall hub, an intervention, and we're just working hard. And I, I don't mean to disparage all of the folks who are not able to to get a space, but I want you guys to know that we are working really hard to accommodate everyone that we can. And again, I just have to send the biggest kudos to Collins teachers who've worked tirelessly through this year and tirelessly through this reopening. I have 13 of 18 teachers coming back. I'm running nine hubs. We're going to do study hall hubs so that students who whose teacher chose not to come will still get to be in person with my paraprofessionals. And we're going to work through this and it's going to be great. We're going to get the opportunity to practice and I want people to stay positive and know that we're doing the best that we can for kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jean Kincher.
Hello, I just wanted to ponder. I heard that subs are not going to have to be vaccinated. So I'm wondering what the logic behind making teachers become vaccinated is if they might be placed with a sub that is not vaccinated.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Joanna Pace.
Good evening, board and superintendent. First off, I want to thank you all for your efforts. This is, this is unlike any other time and I, my hats off to you and all the work you've done, the pivoting and the creative thinking and the tireless efforts to get us all back into school. I just want to once again ask you to let us know how many people are watching the board meeting and if somebody could announce that periodically or show it on the screen, that'd be helpful. Thanks a lot.
Our next speaker is Jessie Montano.
Hi, board members. Thank you so much for your update. As a member of the West Country Costa Safe Open School group of parents, teachers and family members that so much want to go back safely. You mentioned a spreadsheet of the status of the 55 schools and there are a lot of questions about, you know, whether the status of the schools, of the specific classrooms, the quantity levels, we spoke about waitlists as well. And I think, I'm not sure if that statement about sharing that was specifically for the board or for the board and district families and parents at large, but I think it would be a great idea to go ahead and publish that so that parents and families can have that resource available to them. I also want to echo the sentiments that were shared earlier today about just given the kind of like, you know, uncertainties that have been happening with spring, that we go ahead and share more concrete plans and the progress towards those plans for both summer and fall. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Kelly Hardy.
Good evening and thank you. I'm the mom of a third grader. I want to express my gratefulness to everyone at Madera Elementary. Folks have really worked hard, Principal Ranch and all of the teachers and staff who are coming in and who are not coming in are are working really hard to make things happen for kids. And I really appreciated the comment a few comments ago by someone from Collins Elementary, just very focused on making this happen for for kids and and moving forward and really appreciate that. I do want to echo, we need more visibility on the plan for the fall. We've definitely heard several times and it has not gone unnoticed and we're grateful that the plan is for a full reopening in the fall. More specifics around what a full reopening means, because that could mean many different things would really be helpful. And I know that you're just working right now and making spring happen, but people are really looking for that specific plan for the fall. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Maya Shonik.
Hi there. I want to reiterate what Kelly said. I'm also a parent at Madera Elementary and also felt had a, had a response after the person from Collins Elementary spoke that I really am feeling so appreciative of the work that's being done at our school and just the immense amount of effort that is being put in to create options for the kids at our school. So I'm feeling a lot of gratitude about that. I know that this plan is not perfect and but I really see that our teachers are stepping up to try and do something for the kiddos. I wanted to make a comment about the mask issue. I know that there has been discussion about making sure that it's not punitive and I think that that's very important. I appreciate that. But I do think the safety issue is really paramount. And I think that you can go beyond just, you know, the step from, you know, reminding and then going to a discipline issue and actually implement procedures around providing masks that fit, because usually when people's masks slip down over their nose, it's because it doesn't fit. So I just wanted to point that out. All right, thank you.
Your next speaker is Tine Woodward Hernandez.
Hi, so I am an APAC lead and for Washington Elementary. I came a little late because of work and meeting schedule conflicts. So this might have been addressed, but I'd like to have more understanding around the, the parents and how they'll be contacted when they're, when they are selected to go back into school. And then also just more information on how parents are going to be informed on what the protocols of the school, the COVID protocols of the schools will be, if that'll be something that's going to email only, or if there's more communication like email, peach jar, cold calls as well as signage. And then the last thing is, and again, this might have been addressed already. As kids are going back to school and the black community, we're still dealing with home terrorism. So we want to just make sure that we're keeping our kids being impacted by more than COVID, as, as you're seeing in the news that it's more than COVID that black kids are dealing with. So just wanted to get more information around like how we're going to, are we going to have counselors in the school? When the school does reopen, are they going to be, you know, tested or given vaccinations so that our black children are supported in that regard as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Our last public speaker looks to be a corporate account, so if you could give your name when you are unmuted, clear com.
Hi there, I didn't mean to log in with my company account. Apologies for that. This is Rachel Archibald. I am a mother of a third grader currently in the district and I'm very grateful that she has the chance to go back next week due to, you know, great efforts by our school. I am really concerned when I hear about other families who have had very different experiences. And it makes me concerned that the district isn't addressing that these issues in a more holistic way. And it makes me really concerned about the fall because we are depending on the fall to truly be a full reopening. And so far, I feel like the district leadership hasn't shown us that they're up to the task of making that happen. So I would just encourage the district leadership to be as transparent, as transparent as possible and move as quickly as possible towards giving parents the information that they need to feel that plans are being put in place for the fall that they can count on. Thank you so much for everything that you're doing and I appreciate so much our teachers who are working so hard in difficult circumstances.
Thank you, and that concludes public comment, President Phillips.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wall. Thank you to everyone who called in, board. We are moving on to discussion. I want to remind folks that even though this is a very important topic, we have a ton of stuff to still get through. And it's all important and we're supposed to go back in the closed session. So we do need to make sure we get to the other items as well. To give context for this discussion, board members, when you are talking, please express whether you have any objection or whether you support, I'll say it in the affirmative, whether you support us using the local assessment this year instead of SBACK. And I also want to preface that this is a recommendation that came from the academic cell committee, which is chaired by Smith Folds and the member is Gonzalez Hoyer. So again, please say whether you support using local assessment instead of SBACK.
Okay, I can go. Thank you, President Phillips. So I have a few comments, I'll make them brief and then I'll end with my direction about the SBACK. I just want to say thank you to everybody, Mr. Duffy, Dr. Wall, your staff, principals, specifically teachers. They were working over spring break, during their break to come up with these plans. Their ILTs were meeting, teachers were joining to talk about the surveys. It's been a lot in two weeks. So I just want to say thank you because they did that for free, right? And during their break that really needed. With that said, you know, I want to ask our community, our families, staff to have patience. We have 54 schools and the plans are coming in as we go. And, and we just need to have, I know everybody is waiting. So I also want to say thank you to our families for, for sticking through, through this and being patient. But we need to continue to be patient as we figure out the plans. Every staff member is working 18 hours a day from Superintendent Duffy all the way to teachers to make sure that Monday happens. The fall conversation will come, right? And we will have it and we'll be transparent, but we need to have patience so that we can have a successful opening Monday. And with that said, I want to say thank you to trustee Emiliano and Leon and our unions because we went and visited all the school scenario for to make sure they had the PPE and the safety protocols and the safety equipment needed in order to open on Monday. They do, and it was an amazing walkthrough. We went to Deansa High School, Crespe Valley View, Terra Hills, Olinda, Murphy Highland Riverside Sheldon. We finished today and they were wonderful. I want to thank Mr. Freeze and, gosh, Vincent Myers, I almost forgot his last name. Because as we would see problems, they literally got on the phone with us live and fixed them or ordered supplies as we were finding problems at the sites, which were quite a few, but they've been fixed now because we did, we did these walkthroughs. So I'm really thankful and I'm thankful for our student trustees for joining me. And hopefully they'll say something about it, about their perspective later. But I felt like they were really powerful to be able to meet with the principals, talk to them about their plan and see classrooms, see the open spaces, see the isolation rooms and talk to them about their, their safety measures. You know, I put where my money where my mouth is and I'm planning on volunteering for a hub so that we can provide more opportunities to students. And I don't do that lightly because I am literally having a hard time leaving my house every day because I have lost family to this virus, but I'm doing it because I truly care about making this a successful plan. So I'm going to be volunteering and, and, and I'm working with my job to make sure I can, I can make it happen. But with that said, I, Mr. Duffy, I do want to see you and I want to see your cabinet and I want to see every administrator that we can in the central office volunteering as well, right? Because if I have that expectation on myself, I hope that we have it for everybody in our staff. As long as they're willing to volunteer, right? I don't want to force anyone, including yourself, Mr. Duffy, I'm putting you on the spot and I'm willing to deal with you, so wing, wing. But, you know, I, I want to make sure that we can offer as many spaces to families as possible. And now we have many volunteers, more than I was expecting. So thank you to everybody who's volunteering. And then last thing I would say is that I'm 1,000% in support of replacing the SBACK with local assessments. I could talk about why for many hours, but I would just say that I believe the SBACK is not just a racist test. But it, it, right now, in the middle of the pandemic, I didn't believe in it before. I don't believe in it, in it now, when it's just going to make it even harder for us to return to in person. So 100% believe in using a tool that we're already using, our students are used to and will show us real results and data. So, you know, I would encourage my colleagues to, to also give that direction that we move forward with, with our local assessments instead of the SBACK. And thank you, everybody, for what you're doing. Thank you, President Phillips, that was it.
Thank you, sir. Director.
Thank you. So I'll start off with the SBACK, which it's fine through the, three to eight if we want to use STAR instead of SBACK, that's fine. For the 11th grade, though, if they're going to use it for college readiness, I think that would be optional for them to decide and I think that's okay too. So I'm okay with that. I think I have it straight on that. I also want to echo, you know, just to save time, I want to echo Justin Gonzalez's comments. I'm deeply appreciative for everyone. It's been humongous, love. Thank you, Principal Steen, for your comments. You know, people are working really hard. I do ask that schools do keep lists of parents that are interested and so if there are openings that kids can get in, that feels like a little piece in the process that isn't working so well. So if we can do that and have kids So if we can do that and have kids spots for kids as soon as we can, that would be very helpful and in the interest of time, that is, thank you.
Superintendent Duffy, I'm looking for those numbers again of the 14, 1,486 students. How many of those are coming back? I would like that disaggregated with our black and our brown students. Thank you to trustee Gonzalez Hoi. He is willing to do a walkthrough of some Area Five schools for me, which I really appreciate. I will not be going to onsite visits because I'm immune compromised, but I do appreciate him stepping up to the plate with that teamwork and helping out. Also want to thank Louis Freeze for being able to coordinate with site administrators for them to be able to send videos to me of their sites to make sure that their sites are ready and everything is going to be ready for Monday. Superintendent Superintendent Duffy, I would also like that to be a published form or graph about where every school is, not just for the board's eyes, but a way that the community will be able to see this is the school, this is what they're offering, and that can be changing. Hopefully the numbers go up and they can offer more things, but it should be on our district website, just like everything else is that has to do with COVID response and return to schools. As it pertains to testing, it was out of the academic subcommittee that we do local testing. I think that's the best thing to do. Also want parents to know that you can still opt out of local testing. You don't have to do testing at all. You can opt your child out of local testing and out of state testing. All you have to do is write your administrator and let them know your child's name and that you are choosing to opt them out of testing. So I want to make sure that parents have full transparency and an understanding when it surrounds our testing. That are, that is all of my comments for now. Thank you.
Emiliano.
Do you have any comment? We skipped Mr. Christian.
Oh. Mr. Christian, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was like, all right.
I'm sorry.
You skipped me. All right, appreciate that. Thank you. I just want to say I'm in support of the local testing. And then also want to thank the staff and all those who have been working diligently and hard to reopen the schools, to all those who have spent their time and all their organizing and put things together. Also, I want to echo along with because Dimitri Gonzalez Hoi has mentioned volunteered some time. I'll be there as well. Also, he's going to be going with me on Friday along with Mr. Freeze and others to to do a walkthrough on this coming Friday. And so yeah, we just have a lot to continue to do. And just want to, once again, thank everybody for the diligently working hard to make things happen. That's it.
Thank you very much. I was just making sure you were paying attention. Now we're going to go to Ms. Emiliano.
I'd like to start with regarding the localized testing. I am in support of using the STAR testing instead of the Sback testing. I'd also like to echo what all the trustees before me have said and thank everyone who's been a part of the process of making schools safe for students to return and staff to return, going on the tours with Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, as well as the others who whose names, I'm sorry. I met you once. I don't know your names. I apologize. But it was a really great experience to see what all these schools are going through, what procedures they're putting into place to make sure that their students, as well as staff and administration are safe. And I'm really grateful to all of you for doing that. Thank you.
So I would also like to thank trustee Gonzalez Hoi for inviting Ms. Emiliano and I to join on the tour of the schools in Area Four. It was a great opportunity to see how the schools were preparing for the transition to partial in-person learning. And also to add on top of the transition from Sback to STAR testing, I'm in support of that as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leon. I just have a couple of of comments. I do want to recognize that people are working hard to to get this done. There are a lot of emails and whatnot that are coming in where some folks are not happy. What I do want to say about that is the agreement that we reached was a, in many ways, it was a compromise, right? We're just being frank. And so I think it's really important in understanding that it was a compromise that we follow it. And what I mean by that is the structure that was laid out in that agreement, meaning the intervention, the instructional block from 10 to 2, and then the intervention. But that's actually done, right? Because it's it's one thing for folks to understand that in the realities of the situation, that they want, you know, A, but what's realistic is B. And I think that that's where we were. And I think people, if we end up with C, I think that that is, you know, a legitimate issue. So my request, what I am asking is I understand that we're still figuring some things out, that we're still putting some things into place. And I understand that because of that, you know, as a district, we're asking for grace, but I just want us to remember what we're asking for grace for. We're asking for grace for time to be able to put in place what we said, not something different. Because everybody, you know, people talk about that analogy, everybody was supposed to walk away from this agreement not having exactly what they wanted. And this is a situation where I think it 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 worked out and people accepted it because everybody knew that everybody was walking away from it without having exactly what they wanted. So to then turn around and to receive something different, I understand how that could be an issue. So, you know, I understand it as a as a parent, as a as a person who was participating in the meetings very actively, obviously. So please just make sure that our sites are doing what this board voted to do, what the bargaining units voted to do, not something different. So so that's what I want to say about that. As far as the local assessment is concerned, I do support using your local assessment as well. Thank you for the recommendation, academic subcommittee. All right, now I'm saying subcommittee. It's not a subcommittee, academic committee. Thank you very much for the recommendation, Mr. Duffy. Everybody on the board, including the student trustees, are in support of this. So that is the direction that you have from us. So that said, we're going to close this item out. It is 8:41. And we have a long way to go. I don't want to. I just want everybody to be cognizant of the time. We cannot spend, you know, an hour on each of these issues. We won't be able to finish our meeting. So we're going to go to the next item, which is item F, no, item E1. And there is some confusion about what item E1 actually was. And that came out with Mr. Gonzalez Hoi talking in the beginning. So I'm just going to, I'm going to start because I don't even know that there's really a presentation with it, but I'm just going to start. So and try to put this whole thing in the context. So we have a board policy already. And so the item, the way it's written, is it makes it seem like, you know, we came here tonight to vote on, you know, some kind of board policy. And that's not true. So right now we have Board Policy 6116, which is classroom interruptions. And that item, that board policy is attached to the agenda, okay? And so I'm going to read this board policy. It's very short. It says, "The governing board recognizes that class time should be dedicated to student learning. The board believes that classroom interruptions, which are not related to the educational program, should be kept at an absolute minimum. The superintendent or designees shall establish administrative regulations to govern classroom interruptions." Okay, so that's the policy that we already have. Nobody is trying to change that policy. The issue is, when I looked at the board policy, I could not find the administrative regulation that went along with it. So the policy exists, but the implementation part, at least as far as there being a written regu, it didn't happen. And so tonight, the purpose was to have a conversation around the importance of protecting instructional time. And because I believe and I'm sure you all do too, and I know Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, you're the teacher, right? But because it is so important to protect instructional time, it is necessary, I believe, that this administrative regulation, unless it appears, unless, I've been looking for it for a while, I've never found it. Okay, so unless it exists and I just didn't see it, what I wanted us to do as a board was have a conversation about the importance of protecting instructional time. And then what I wanted us to do was to give direction to the superintendent on to draft or create an administrative regulation to implement this board policy. And so we don't need to, now theoretically, technically, you know, there's already a board policy that says this, you know, AR administrative regulation is supposed to exist. So really, we don't even need to do anything. We don't need to approve or, you know, say, go do this because the board policy already says, go do it. This board policy was in existence. I just want to put this caveat out there. You look at the board policy, I think it says it was adopted in 2007. So this policy was here long before Matthew Duffy was here. So the fact that we don't have a regulation is not necessarily his fault because this predates him by a long time. Okay. But all I am saying today is I want us to talk about whether we need NAR, the policy says that we're supposed to have one. One of the things that I do want to make sure that I point out, though, is that the difference between the administrative regulation and the board policy. So as the board is really our primary responsibility, and I'm saying this to give context to everybody. As the board, it's really our primary responsibility to adopt policy. The administrative regulations are about implementation of the policy. And that really is in the superintendent's purview. So it's not really for us to be writing administrative regulations. That's really the superintendent's job. But because this is such an important issue about protecting our instructional minutes, particularly where, you know, our children are not performing at the level we would like them to perform at, I wanted us to have a conversation around this so everybody was on the same page about it. And then I would like the superintendent to draft administrative regulations on this because the board policy states. I have absolutely no issue whatsoever with the superintendent taking a draft of that policy to the academic subcommittee. The only thing that I want to remind the academic subcommittee again is that this is not a board policy. This is a administrative regulation, which is in the superintendent's purview. So he may bring, you know, something to you all and it's fine for you guys to give, you know, feedback and whatnot. And you should, right? Because that's what the academic subcommittee is for. But this is not our board policy in the sense that you guys are going to write the regulation. It's more along him bringing the draft, you guys giving some feedback. And, you know, it may come back to the board and say, you know, this is what we ended up with and then it's the AR. So I just said that to give context, but there is no policy tonight for us to adopt. There is no regulation tonight for us to adopt. This is a discussion about why this is important and why it's needed. So Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, does that make sense or does that put it in the context?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Okay. And it was just written a little, a little funky and I think that's what threw folks off. So I'm done. That is really what this is about. And so I'm just going to stop. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, if you have any questions, you could ask those questions of staff, but now that you have the context of what this thing is, I hope we can have a fruitful discussion.
Thank you. I don't know if I have any questions. To be honest, I feel completely unprepared to have this discussion because I, I mean, I didn't speak to any other trustee, but I didn't understand what this was. So I don't have any questions prepared. I conceptually understand what classroom interruptions are as a teacher. I guess I just have one comment later on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
I only have a comment.
Okay. Smith Folds, any questions?
As a teacher, how do you plan on standardizing through an AR 54-plus schools when some are elementary, some are middle, some are high? Do you foresee it being three different ARs or do you see it, because these are very different elementary, middle and high school are very different programs. They are very different school-run programs and to say that zero interruptions will happen at all times or minimum interruptions will happen at all times, it's very different in high school. It looks very, high school has, they do announcements. Their students do announcements at most high schools. They have it's just a different operation. So how do you foresee, do you foresee it being three different ARs? I guess that would be to staff.
No, I don't. I think if we do an AR, we should try to simplify it and get it codified in one document. Maybe within that, we could say something about each of the levels. Yeah, I, I, I think we, we want to stick to the spirit of protecting instructional time without overbuilding too much. I think where the academic committee could be helpful is to actually determine is this, is this, is this really an issue at all? I mean, there's like other interruptions sometimes where a student might have a cell phone or something like that. But, you know, I was talking to trustee Emiliano earlier reviewing the agenda and she was reminding me that her school, they build in the protected time, the extra five minutes of that period for the announcements. So, you know, I think sometimes we don't go after ARs when we don't, you know, see it as the priority. I think we can definitely do it and outline some, you know, some basic stuff. But I think to your point, it's, it really gets to be site-specific on how they want to, you know, craft a day to protect that time. But I think we could put language to it that just gives the BP a little more definition and a little more meat on the bones, so to speak.
So do you feel that an AR is necessary for this particular item or is it just, we need an AR because board policy says that an AR needs to be there? So you're trying to clear up board policy and make sure that what it says is what we have? Or do you feel as a superintendent that instructional minutes have been compromised throughout? I mean, this year, we've been in Zoom, but I'm talking about prior to this year or when we go back. Because I think one of the things of it is, do you feel that when we go back, there's going to be a need for interruptions because it's going to be completely different?
I hadn't thought about that really, that it's going to be completely different. And my hope is that we are as close to normal by the time we get to mid-August, which is, you know, four months away. I think it would be healthy to have a, an AR that aligns with a BP. I think that's always good policy and we, we should do that. I just don't know that, you know, I'd want to overbuild that AR to the point of it feeling super restrictive.
Okay. And the last question is, do you recognize that when we say completely different, it's completely different because we've been in a global pandemic and we're still in a global pandemic. So it's going to be different.
Yeah.
No matter what, like, because kids are coming back from something that they've never had before. So when I use that phrase, that's my universal definition. It's point, it's different. That's it, President Phillips. Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
No questions.
I had one question.
Um, I had one question as to what, um, would be defined as an interruption. Like, would that be just interruptions by students or would that also include interruptions by administrators? For example, there, or like staff, for example, there are staff members who do come into the classroom sometimes and do interrupt the class. There's also students who interrupt the class. Um, so I was just curious what that would, what that would pertain to.
You know, that's, that's a great question. Um, one thing I know is that, um, at least on the policy side, the School Boards Association does have model BPs and model ARs that we can look at, and I'd be curious to see in that AR if it only speaks to kind of school-based interruptions, right, versus, you know, student-based or things that happen there. I'd also, you know, be curious from President Phillips, who I think, you know, was thinking about this issue. If President Phillips, you were thinking more about like, okay, the school does these things, announcements, collecting attendance, this, that, the other thing that might get in the way of instruction, or are you thinking anything like, uh, teacher has to stop to speak to a student about a cell phone, or, you know, teacher has to ask two students to stop talking, you know, any of that. Um, that would, you know, if it goes to the academic committee or just to me, either one would help us know kind of which, uh, arena that you're working in.
Oh, just to, to help me answer the question, uh, since it got pitched this way, um, I don't know. What, what I do know, uh, I don't have a, uh, an AR in mind, like, that I would, you know, I would just pull it out of my back pocket and be like, that's what I want, uh, but I, I really don't. Um, and, you know, I just know that we have almost twenty-nine thousand children. Um, the majority, the overwhelming majority, are not performing to their potential. Uh, and that's not their fault, but the overwhelming majority of them are not. And our most important, uh, two most important things that we do uh, are, you know, keep kids safe and, and teach them. That's it. I mean, everything else is extra, everything else is gravy. Those are the two most important things that we do. And in a space where we have so many children who are not, um, performing where we would like to see them, um, making sure that we are protecting our instructional time, I believe is low-hanging fruit. Uh, and we need to do that. Uh, so, but I do not have, you know, definitions. Um, this is why you guys are getting paid, uh, and I'm not. You guys are the experts. Uh, and, you know, we need, we need a, an administrative regulation to make sure that we are protecting this time because this is really about making sure that our kids, uh, are successful. That's all this is about. That was a little longer than you asked, Mr. Emiliano.
It's all right. Um, that was all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Leon?
Um, I have no questions, Tim.
Okay, um, I don't have any questions either. Um, so we're gonna go to, uh, public comment on this item. Uh, there are three people with their hands up right now. If there are additional folks who, uh, want to speak to this, uh, please raise your hands. We're at five. Um, like, this is what schools are about. So you've been calling about it and other things, calling about this, right? Um, we're at five, all right. Uh, Dr. Wolf, please start.
All right, um, and we jumped to six at the last minute, so Constance, you are first.
Okay, uh, yes, I am having a little trouble with this, uh, Zoom. And one of the things I wanted to talk about is the, the mass sagging. Um, I didn't get a chance to talk about it because of the, couldn't get on, but, um, you know, people have, uh, different, uh, medical conditions that have caused them not to be able to breathe, like asthma or deviated septums. And I think the school should know that and be, and be, uh, you know, gracious. And, um, and also I have trouble with knowing that my child, um, is, is, was a year behind before the pandemic. Now it's like she's two years behind. And when I went to the school, they were saying, oh, no, she's just one year behind. So I'm like, okay, what are they going to do about people that are falling behind? And they don't even know that they're falling behind, uh, and, and, um, and also, I couldn't type this into the chat because your chat is disabled. And, um, and I also wanted to talk about the black schools, but I didn't have a chance, but I would like uh, self-determination to be given, or we are asking for self-determination in our community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paula Raffiti.
Yeah, and I just want to remind folks that this is public comment on this particular item.
Hi, um, I just want to say thank you, uh, for this time, and, and Mr. Phillips, your last comments were really, I, I, I felt those. Um, so my daughter attends Fairmont Elementary. She's a kindergartner. I've been on these calls, and I'm, I'm very invested in, in what decisions you guys come to. I, I have to say, I know at one point someone mentioned this MOU that no one was, um, gonna be fully happy with it, and, and I, I think that's a, an accurate statement, and I think many of us are quite frustrated with the outcome, and, and everyone keeps telling us that, you know, don't worry, fall is gonna be in person. But honestly, I, I have to say I'm really concerned, um, about the plan because there's so much resistance, um, on the part of this district when we see neighboring districts opening. I, I mean, I'm very lucky that my daughter is excelling, and she does have a wonderful kindergarten, kindergarten teacher that is doing an incredible job over Zoom, but this is not the way the kids are meant to learn. And many, 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 many of us want to go back, and we cannot in the spring because this elementary school is only be able to accommodate the five percent that the MOU calls for. So I really ask that, I'm begging, let's ask, I'm begging that you consider families like mine where we really want to take advantage of the public school system because we can afford private school, but we don't want that. We want our daughter to grow up and, and, and be, you know, flourishing in a public school environment, but we can't if it's over Zoom. It's just not the option for us, so please help us.
Your next public speaker.
Thank you very mu- Dr. Wolf, um, please, um, I know this is a really important issue, and people are, um, it's just an important issue, but please, this public comment is about this item. We are talking about classroom interruptions right now.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jean Kinstner.
Hello, board. Um, I'm glad actually to hear this. I ha- I am working at a K-six and now a K-eight school, and we do have announcements. And those announcements go very long. And being a kindergarten teacher, when they're talking about what teams want, that goes over our kids' heads in kindergarten. So I'm hoping maybe we can put a time limit on it so that we don't lose too much of our time. Also, on occasion, if they forget the announcement, then they just randomly do them later in the day, and it's, it is kind of disrupting. Um, that said, I will say, teaching in this district seven years and in general twelve years, I've had maybe four days where peop- the phone is just off the chain, so it's pretty good. One thing, though, is that I've heard in the past, not recently, but the secretaries, either one of them would say, I'd say, please, when this parent calls, let me know. And then later on at lunch, they go, oh, yeah, they called. Well, why didn't you call me? Oh, well, we're not allowed to interrupt the classes. So if a teacher asks, please, if a certain parent is gonna call because, you know, we need to know information from them, please, please put something in there so that teachers can request that a call go through if they want a call to go through. That's one thing I really would like to see. That would be amazing. Thank you.
Next one is Joseph Latzer.
Hi, Joseph Latzer, seventh grade history at Hercules Middle. So I'm, like some of the folks listening, not really clear on what kind of class interruptions we're talking about. But I can say both types of classroom interruptions, whether it's PA announcements, phone calls to the teacher's classroom, and student interruptions during class with talking, have both been major issues in my experiences in the district. I've gotten many calls and announcements during my class time. PA announcements and calls to teachers' classrooms should be kept to an absolute minimum, essential items only, which has not always been the case in my experience. And this relates well to the discussions at the last academic committee meeting. And we think to ourselves, how do we solve these problems of class interruptions by students? More counselors, lower class sizes, and more CSOs to support the students. That's the solution. If you want to solve this issue, it takes money and it takes staffing. You have to put your money where your mouth is. You can't just eliminate suspensions without replacing it with something effective. We need compassion and restorative practices, and at the same time, we need boundaries and accountability because that's the loving and supportive thing to do for our young people. They deserve better than what they've been getting. Our students deserve a class environment where they can be happy, healthy, and learn in the proper supportive academic environment. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sado Wilson.
Good evening again. This is Sado Wilson. Um, I think what really needs to take place is a discussion of specific classroom interruptions. So, yes, you have announcements during, um, the school day and whatnot. But, you know, when you think about cell phones and what the cellphone policy in class. Now, I do recall a couple of years back. Hello?
Sorry, I'm not sure what happened to you there.
Okay, in regards to a cellphone policy and what, I heard someone said, okay, so we need to update the cellphone policy because the district cellphone poly, policy is from the nineties, when that really wasn't big of an issue. So I think at this point, like, cellphone is probably the number one cause of classroom interruptions. So, and that's just for me being a teacher for the last eight years. If I added up all the minutes that were taken away from class based on cell phones alone, that's probably like a whole year of instruction right there, like, real talk. So what types of interruptions? Also, think about, you know, what's not getting our students to class on time? What's going on with that? So you have like, folks cutting like, either trickling late and whatnot, and that actually interrupts the class too. Unless, you know, someone like myself has, like, systems in place up to what happens when you show up, like, just come in, have a seat, and then we'll get you caught up. So they really need to be specific as to what the interruptions are from the teacher's standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last hand that was raised when we began this is Denise Steen.
Uh, President Phillips, trustees, it's Pres- Principal Denise again from Collins. Um, I appreciate a carte blanche, uh, um, board policy on this, but I think that the, the issue really should really be that the principals are trained. Let's come together and talk about what our individual issues are. Let's have autonomy because we can, as administrators, work on our own individual sites to do our announcements three minutes before the bell rings. Or five minutes, you give our, our staff five minutes to hear the announcements. We have to be specific too about what are disruptions because at different sites, high school, middle school, and elementary disruptions are very different. So a board policy can't be from top to bottom because that exes us out of having our own policies at our own schools. You've hired us to be the administrators over our own schools. Let us do that. Bring us in. Let us have training, communication, and input into what this policy should look like. Please. Thank you for your time.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. We're gonna go to board comment. Um, I just want to give some context before we begin. So again, I am not asking for us to write a board policy, right? Um, and I know that's what people are hearing, but this is not about a board policy. We already have one. This is simply about the administrative regulation that we are supposed to have. And, and it's not about us as a group drafting a, an administrative regulation. That, that is literally staff's job. Um, so that said, um, board discussion, Mr. Gonzalez, boy.
Thank you. Um, so I do have to say that I'm a little salty that we're having this conversation tonight when we have so many other bigger items that we should be discussing. And honestly, I have not heard a need for this whatsoever. Um, I a hundred percent agree with Ms. Steen who called in. This should be really on the autonomy of the site. I think that things like, I, we've been concentrating a lot on announcements, but announcements actually can be a really positive thing for a school. My experience with announcements that we use them to build a positive culture, um, to build, you know, announce which classroom would read the most, et cetera. Um, and that actually correlated to increasing our achievement because we wanted to, we wanted to appreciate the work that was going on at the sites. I know that many schools use announcements to build culture in many different ways. Um, and many other schools have different type of interruptions. I do think that it would be a good conversation to have in the academic committee so that we can hear feedback on the need of this because I just don't see it. Um, and I agree, I do think that we, if we do direct staff to do an AR, it should be done in collaboration between administrators and teachers so that they can figure out where the autonomy is, uh, the vagueness, and then obviously the areas that have to be more direct. I agree with, uh, Mr. Sado who called in. I think for the last two years, we've been trying to, in my previous role, we were trying to create a policy on cell phones. Um, and maybe that can be part of this, uh, or we can bring that back, which seems to be a bigger issue than, um, than classroom interruptions. Um, I, I, I particularly don't see a correlation between interruptions and loss of academic achievement because they don't happen as often as you might think. Um, and as a teacher, I mean, we get calls. If there are announcements, then that needs to be a conversation that happens at that site that the principal needs to work through, um, that the teachers need to work through, um, and figure out if it is a problem. Um, but is it a problem district-wide? I don't see, I don't see it. Um, and I, I do think that we rushed through the last item, which was incredibly important to talk about the spring. Um, and here we are talking about something that I really don't see a need for. Um, so my recommendation would be that instead of writing the, directing staff to write an AR right now, it is sent to the academic committee to figure out if there's a need, uh, which areas, talk about the details of what it would look like, and then from there, staff creates an AR that they bring us to, they bring to, to the full board. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Gonzalez, boy, just to clarify, are you saying that the academic sub, can you just restate what you're saying so I understand what you?
Yeah, yeah, my, my opinion would be that this topic about classroom interruptions is brought to the academic subcommittee, academic, academic committee. Um, and that Chair Smith Folds and I and staff figure out a way to gather input from different stakeholders, uh, invite different stakeholders, hear the need of this AR, hear the needs, the areas of need, and then from there, staff writes an AR that then they can bring to the full board. So to summarize, academic committee get feedback from stakeholders, then after that, create an AR.
Okay, so recommendation, this goes to academic, feedback comes after staff hears the feedback, they write an AR based on the feedback.
That, yes, that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Um. It, Reckler?
Thank you. So I don't think this is unimportant, but I also want us, I want to encourage us to think about our priorities and our timelines. And for me, the most important things that we should be working around right now is spring, summer, fall, onboarding a new superintendent, and negotiations with our labor units. I think this should be tabled for a while, and let staff get some sleep and work on what's important. Honestly, for, if the academic committee wants to take it up, that would be fine. But what I'd really want to see them working on is how to address all the needs of our kids coming back to school. Thank you.
Okay, um, Smith Folds?
I think that this is important. I think it's just a matter of timing. Um, I think that when we talk about protecting academic time, then we really have to talk about safety too. Does that mean we don't have fire drills during the day? Because that's interrupting academic time. Does that mean we don't have our other safety drills during the day because that interrupts time? Does that mean that our leadership classes can no longer do the things that they do during the school day because that interrupts time? As a former leadership teacher, and Navi knows this also, they would go to different classes and sell Valentine grams, or they would go and they would do announcements inside the classroom. Does that mean that our counselors no longer go inside our English classrooms and talk about? the next year's classes that they used to do? This is stuff that happens throughout the day. Does that mean we have no assemblies during the day? I think that this is an issue that if we want to tackle it, we have to do so in such a way that it is comprehensive. It means that we're very clear on what we mean about protecting instructional time because that means a whole lot of things. If we truly stick to the the letter of the intent of the the statement, then that means we don't do any of the things that we just talked about. So I would recommend that we do, as trustee Gonzalez Hoy has suggested, take this and bring it to the academic subcommittee. We'll have these conversations. We will invite, um, we will invite people in to give us a on the ground idea of what this looks like from our admin to our teachers, to our counselors, to our leadership teachers to know what the impact of an AR would look like at our schools at the very different levels. Because I think that we have to be clear that we can't use a paintbrush on policy and we can't use a paintbrush with our admin and our sites and say, everybody's gonna have to do this. We are very much one, but we are also very individual and we need to value that. Thank you, President Phillips.
Okay, uh, Krista?
Uh, no comments.
Okay, and Emiliano?
Um, oh, I think that agree that this is an important um, subject. It is important to protect the learning time of students. However, however, I will echo what the other trustees have said. And I I don't personally feel like this is an important issue at this time. Yes, it is important. It is something to be discussed. However, as Ms. Reckler said, we do have other things going on right now. Um, I do support this issue going to the academic committee and I think that could be great so that it is discussed. However, uh, I feel that it isn't extremely high on the priority list. Um, thank you, President Phillips.
Okay, Leon?
Um, yeah, I share the same opinions that the other trustees have brought up. Um, so yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, just gonna add a couple of things. Even though we are in the midst of a pandemic and even though, uh, in many ways, the world has turned upside down. We are still a school district. And our job, our number one job is still to teach children. So this issue may not be the most emergent issue. Meaning, uh, you know, this may not be what we think is an emergency. Uh, but in protecting instructional time and the extension of that and like Ms. Smith Folds, Mrs. Smith Folds talked about being comprehensive, protecting instructional time and then making sure what happens during that instructional time is the best thing that could happen for kids. That is the most important issue next to making sure that the kids are safe. Uh, and so I get it. It's 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 not, it's not a sexy issue. Uh, it's not a sexy issue at all. Uh, and you know, and it's not, um, an issue that is, you know, people look at it as an emergency, but uh, you know, if we look at, you know, the performance of of some of our children, it is an emergency. And and one of the things that I've heard people talk about as well in this pandemic is that when we go back to school, that it cannot be school as usual. Everybody keeps saying that, that they want to go back to something different because what was working for kids or what was happening wasn't working for kids. You know, and so now we're having a conversation around, you know, protecting instructional minutes. That's not, that's not, that's not that important. That's what this whole thing is about. I mean, if that if that's not important, we should all go home. Uh, because this is a school district. Um, some of the particulars that are being talked about, again, I don't know. And I'm not saying that I have the answers. Uh, I'm not saying that I could define what all of the classroom interruptions look like. I'm not saying that I can tell you what the policy should look like. That's not my job to tell y'all what the policy should look like. That's why we have a superintendent. While we have cabinet, while we have administrators at the site level, that's their job. Right? All I'm saying is that, you know, we have a board policy that says that these minutes should be protected and there's a reason for that. And that same board policy says that we are supposed to have an AR for good reason. I don't have any problem with this going uh, to academic. I don't have any problem with there being space created for teachers and administrators uh, to give their feedback to the superintendent, uh, in 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 writing this administrative regulation. No problem with that whatsoever. So, um, in this space, I am referring this issue because it wasn't even on for a vote tonight. This was just about a discussion. Right? So I am Mr. Duffy. Uh, please work with the academic subcommittee. I know Mr. Aurelio was part of that. I think he's the staffer for that, but please work with the academic subcommittee to create some space uh, for our staff to be able to talk about, you know, what, talk about this because it is a real conversation. Um, and then after you get the feedback, please, uh, draft a a a an administrative regulation. Uh, but I do want to just impart that what we're talking about right now is not a board policy. We're talking about implementation. That is the superintendent's position. That is the superintendent's job to write administrative regulations. So, you know, academic subcommittee, please don't try to write it for them because that's that's not, that's not really our role. Uh, but please go talk to the Mr. Duffy's, meet with them, academic subcommittee, create a space for all of the stakeholders to be able to give their input. I I think that that is a great idea. Okay, Mr. Duffy?
Yep, good. Good.
Okay. The next item, um, and let's take just a short break for five minutes. Board, is that okay? Okay, um, can I have a motion to? Uh, can I have a second, please?
Oh, second that.
Okay, so it was moved by Smith Folds and seconded by Emiliano. Um, to take a five minute break, uh, onto the vote, Gonzalez, wait.
And so, so yes.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Krista, yes.
Emiliano, yes.
Yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you so much. We're on break for five minutes until nine twenty-six. Okay, thank you, uh, very much, uh, everyone. Uh, we are now going to go on to item F1, uh, which is consideration of approval of superintendent's employment agreement. Approval of the superintendent's contract attached with the individual name at the time of the meeting within the motion under the terms of the contract as referenced in the contract and formal motion. Um, have we promoted Mr. Brown? Okay, um, I don't know that Mr. Brown was actually going to, um, present this evening, but I saw his name, uh, in the Zoom. Oh, there he is. Mr. Brown, do you want to present this or do you want to answer question or what do you want to do?
No, I I I thought it would be, uh, just to be available and, uh, add any comments as appropriate. I did want to say one thing. Uh, and that is on behalf of Leadership Associates to thank the board for, uh, allowing us to par, to partner with them in this search. But more importantly, to thank the board itself for all the time that you spent on this process. Uh, uh, we were all very impressed by your thoughtfulness, your consideration of each other's opinions, your research and all that you did to bring this process to fruition. We're very pleased with the quality of the candidates that came to you and most importantly, the one that you are about to hire as your next superintendent. So, uh, and I would only add to that. We set the record in Leadership Associates for the number of people participating in the search. Uh, Robert Jordan, Debbie Haney and others really helped us reaching out to the community. And, uh, I think we had over 5,000 people participate in the different forums to get input on what we should be looking for. So again, thanks to you, board members, for all the good work that you did in this and the leadership you showed. And congratulations to your new superintendent and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, uh, very much, um, Mr. Brown, um, board, I was thinking about this, uh, and I think it's appropriate, um, if I just read some things about the candidate, um, but your thoughts? Yeah, okay, uh, I will do, I will do that. This item follows an exhaustive six month superintendent search process in which WCCUSD held more than fifty listening sessions with students, families, staff and community stakeholders. The district also gathered more than 6,000 responses from the community on the next superintendent's qualities and qualifications. WCCUSD received nearly thirty applications for the position from throughout the country. The board has offered the position to Dr. Kenneth C. Hurst. Dr. Hurst has served as the superintendent of the Othello District in Othello, Washington since 2016. As superintendent of the forty, four thousand five hundred student district located about three hours southeast of Seattle, Dr. Hurst increased graduation rates by sixteen percent from seventy-one percent to eighty-seven percent and reduced absences by thirty-three percent. He also implemented Othello's K through twelve pathway, the district's social emotional learning standards. Dr. Hurst also tripled the number of children enrolled in preschool and increased the percent of preschool students prepared for kindergarten from thirty percent. and increased the percent of preschool students prepared for kindergarten from 30% to more than 98%. In Othello, Dr. Hurst led a district with a student population that is 91% Latinx, 32% English language learners, and 75% free and reduced-priced lunch through the transition to distance learning at the start of the COVID-19 pandemic and from distance learning to a hybrid model this year. Before leading the Othello School District, Dr. Hurst served as Associate Superintendent of Educational Services in Oceanside Unified School District, a 19,000-student district 35 minutes northwest of San Diego. While serving as the Associate Superintendent of Educational Services, he supervised the Oceanside Promises Implementation to ensure all Oceanside students graduated ready for college and career and established the Oceanside Promise Foundation, a 501(c)(3). In Oceanside, Dr. Hurst collaborated with Connect Ed California, implementing Link Learning to establish K-12 industry-aligned pathways to prepare students to succeed in college and career. He collaborated to implement the Future Ready Technology Initiative, designed to create a shared vision of preparing students for success in college, career, and citizenship. Dr. Hurst has 23 years of experience teaching and leading equity in urban, suburban, and rural K-12 districts. He spent six years as a principal and assistant principal in Oceanside, including the turnaround principal for Jefferson Middle and Oceanside High Schools. At Oceanside High School, Dr. Hurst led double-digit growth in the school's academic growth performance. He also facilitated instructional rounds for the Oceanside High School Network and the LCAP Development. Dr. Hurst also served as an administrator in the San Diego Unified and Poway Unified School Districts. He started his educational career in Poway Unified as a math and computer programming and computer science teacher. Dr. Hurst earned his Doctorate in Education, K-12 Leadership, magna cum laude at the University of Southern California in 2011 and his Master of Arts Degree in Educational Administration, magna cum laude, in 2008, and his Bachelor of Science, a degree in mathematics, in 1997 at California State University, San Marcos. He also holds an Associate of Arts Degree from National University, San Diego. Dr. Hurst and his wife, Crystal, have two grown children, a daughter who is a sixth-grade teacher, and a son who is a computer scientist. That is what we wanted to present about Dr. Hurst. Board, do you have any questions? And we have Mr. Brown on the line to answer your questions. Okay, seeing no question.
I have a question. Is he gonna come on screen? Like, I don't see him. Like, I don't see him or his lovely wife. I just see y'all.
Okay, yes, he is. I think the screen is just not turned on. Here we go. That is Dr. Kenneth C. Hurst.
And, and his wife, so.
Yes, and let's move. There we go. There's the, there's the cute couple.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Smith Folds, for catching that. So, they will have an opportunity to speak, you know, in a moment. But is there any, if there are no questions, public, we're gonna have public comment. If you do want to make a comment, you can, so please raise your hand if that's what you would like to do. We have two hands, three. Okay, four. All right, five. Okay, it looks like we have five hands. The last one up is, looks like Zalon Harrison. Last one, yes, Zalon Harrison. No. Mariela Quayar is the last one. Okay, Dr. Wolf, please begin.
Right, first one is going to be Patricia Garrett. You may unmute. Patricia Garrett.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Hello, I am Patricia Garrett. I am a kindergarten teacher in the district, and I just want to welcome you to West Contra Costa. It is a beautiful district that I have been a part of, and I can't wait to see how you are going to take it in positive and beautiful directions. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is on a cellphone, the last four numbers, 7412.
Hello, my name is Maria Hall, and, Mr. Hurst, I would just like to say that I am so excited that our board took the time to have a thorough search. I think that you are the best candidate for our school district, our diverse school district. I'm so excited that you're coming from the wonderful state of Washington, and I'm so excited that you're bringing a lot of that expertise in terms of all the work that has been done across the state to increase preschool enrollment. I love the fact that you started from a science background. You have extensive experience with CTE. I'm so excited to see all the many innovative ideas you're going to bring into the district and also, of course, build upon so many of the amazing programs that are already there. One that I'd like to highlight is the amazing STEAM program at Kennedy High School. And so I just want to extend my welcome to you from African-American teachers, community members, from the West Contra Costa community. We are so excited about what's going to happen, and we are so hopeful. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Marissa Glynn. Marissa, you can unmute. There may be an issue with her, so we'll come back to Marissa. And we will go to Kim Chamberlain. You may unmute.
Hello, welcome to West Contra Costa Unified School District. I am Kimberly Chamberlain, President of the School Supervisors Association, IFPTE Local 21. I have longstanding hope that we will be very successful under your leadership. Welcome aboard.
We will go to Zalon Harrison.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for choosing our district and welcome. I am a very active parent advocating for the Black students in our district, and I look forward to doing a lot of work with you so we can close this achievement gap. Thank you for coming.
Gonna try Marissa again.
Can you hear me?
We got you.
Yes, okay, so sorry about that. Hi, Dr. Hurst and your lovely wife. My name is Marissa Glynn. I am a third-grade teacher in the district on full-time release to serve as President of United Teachers of Richmond, the teachers' union here in West Contra Costa Unified School District. And I just wanted to share my excitement and my enthusiasm about getting to work with you and welcome you to the district, so can't wait to get started, and great to have you and your wife here. Thank you.
Mariela Quayar, you're next.
Good night. My name is Mariela Quayar. I just want to say welcome to a diverse community. Buen, bienvenido. My daughter is in Richmond High School. I also work for the district, and I just want to say thank you for choosing our community. We are a diverse community, full of richness, but also full of a lot of challenges. I am very active. I like to be involved in my daughter's education, but also, I also advocate for all of our students in our community. I sometimes I, you know, it's hard for me to, just, not to speak because I speak a lot, but my main goal is for us to build relationships. We don't want a person just to come and say, "We're gonna save this community." We need to work together as a team. Like I say, I'm a mother, but also I work for the district, and I I'm very committed for my daughter's education, but also to the students here in our West Contra Costa County. And I just thank you for you and your family to come, and we can work together as a team. Gracias.
And our last public speaker is Jose De Leon.
Good evening, Dr. Hurst, and also to your wife. My name is Jose De Leon. I am the President of the Administrators Association here at West Contra Costa. We welcome you, and we look forward to working together with you. Thank you.
That'll do it, President Phillips.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you to everybody who called in as well. I am asking for a motion. Hands already up. Mr. Gonzalez, why hit it?
Thank you, President Phillips. I'm so excited, and I was ready for the motion. I move that we approve the superintendent's contract with Dr. Hurst with a start date of May 17 to allow for a transition time between superintendents.
Can we have a second?
Okay.
Okay, it was moved by Gonzalez Hoyer, seconded by Smith Folds. Board discussion, any comments, Mr. Gonzalez Hoyer?
Thank you, President Phillips. I'll try to keep it brief, but I want to say a couple of things that I learned about Dr. Hurst as well in his interview. That was pretty lengthy. We spent quite a bit of time, all of us together. So I believe that we are presenting the WCCUSD community with an incredibly qualified candidate that we found with a proven record, proven leadership, and proven experience. Dr. Hurst is someone who is equity-focused, has a background of increasing student achievement, is data-driven, works in collaboration with all labor partners and families, and is always student-centered. Dr. Hurst is someone who is not just qualified to support our district through these very challenging times, but has also gone through a successful school reopening in his previous district. I am very proud and excited to be part of this new journey for WCCUSD and to continue this important work alongside our new superintendent. My hope is our community will see very quickly the values and characteristics the board saw that Dr. Hurst exemplifies and that will lead to a positive long-term change and success to our educational community. Dr. Hurst and to Ms. Hurst, welcome. I'm so excited that you're gonna be joining us, and thank you.
Reckler.
Thank you. So I do have some comments. The first thing I want to do, and I'm sorry, it started brief and then it grew, so you're gonna have to just bear with me for a moment. So the first people I want to thank is the community in that I am really humbled to have been able to participate in this process and to choose the next leader. It really was the ultimate honor to be entrusted with this decision, and I didn't take it lightly. And I didn't see any of my colleagues taking it lightly. You were in the room the entire time, and your children's hopes and dreams were in the room as well. I chose for them. To my colleagues, I just want to thank you for how seriously you took this responsibility and your thoughtfulness and your thoroughness of your questions. And it was an honor to be able to work with you to do this. I also want to thank Ms. Haney and Mr. Jordan, Dr. Wolf, for their assistance. I really want to thank Ms. Haney, whose insights were so valuable and appreciated. And there was one point where she was just like, "Don't worry if they've gotten fired before. It's a political job. There's bumps in the road. Don't ignore it, but look past it." They really, it's just a, it's just a bruise on the way, and I thought that was really great. I also want to thank Leadership Associates. We were in really good hands. These guys were great. I really enjoyed working with Jim Brown. We had a number of side conversations along the way that were thoughtful, and he was right on everything that he said, so that was good. And I also want to thank Sandy, who pushed for certain candidates when I was blowing them off, and she fought for them, and she was right about that, too. And then, okay, so I got all that, right? And then to Dr. Hurst and Crystal, they're sitting here to my left, but we're on Zoom, so it's a little weird. But welcome to the family. I'm really glad you're here. I hope your time here is challenging and fulfilling and rewarding and fun, and I am definitely looking forward to the partnership. So, thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much, Trustee Reckler. Smith Folds.
First, just to clarify, Dr. Hurst never got fired, and then, like, that's not, that was just like a general comment. It didn't particularly have to do with him. Second of all, there's a, there's a former principal in the district who used to say, his name was Mr. Shaw. He used to say that there are no problems, they're just opportunities. I want you to know that there's a lot of opportunities in this district. Like, we have a lot of opportunities, and we know that you will be able to handle those. And you can only eat an elephant bite by bite. So we're not expecting you to turn any kind of water into wine. We know you don't walk on water, and we're not gonna allow anyone to hosanna you in and then crucify you out. This is going to take time. It's gonna take a community effort, it's gonna take all of us working together as one for a shared vision. I also want to let you know, for me personally, the reason why you're here for me is because of the woman sitting next to you. You were great, whatever, great. Everybody was qualified, everybody was like, but the way you spoke about your wife and the way that you said you run things past her, and she is a sounding board for you, and she has guided you all the way through, that's when I knew that you were not only qualified, but you wasn't stupid. So we're looking for someone who's able to know their limitations and know who to go to for the right answers, and I believe that is the one sitting next to you. I appreciate you being here. Thank you for saying yes to us. It's gonna be a marriage. You gotta say yes to us every single day. Yes to us when we are, you know, praising you, and yes to us when we are asking you to grow further in your occupation. So thank you very much, and we look forward to having you as our West Contra Costa Unified School District Superintendent. And when I say you, I mean your wife, but thank you.
Christian.
Thank you, President Phillips. Want to say, Dr. Hurst, we thank you for choosing us. And I just think back on my colleagues as we sat in the room and tried to figure this thing out. And, and one thing you have is a caring spirit that cares about our young people and all of that, but you want to see the overall of a district move forward and elevate to the next level. And so we have a lot of work to do to be able to connect with the population of our community out there, community of schools, and the community of our cities out here. And so we're gonna be with you every step of the way. And, and one thing I want to say is that we have some good board members who really care and really want to see good things happen for our staff, our students, everybody, and to see all of us go to the next level because we all have what it takes to make it happen. And, and like I say, everybody worked diligently hard from the unions, all the unions, and, and everybody. So it's time to go to work, y'all. It's time to do, to make some good things happen and be ready for our schools to open and be ready for the summer and be ready for the fall, and we can go, we move forward. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Emiliano? Emiliano?
I'd like to thank everyone who's a part of the process of choosing our new superintendent. I'm also grateful that Thomas and I were included in that process. It was a really great experience. It was very fun, I guess, to be interviewing all day. A little bit tiring, but still a very great experience that I'll remember for a while. And it was really great to interview you, Dr. Hurst, and be a part of that process. I look forward to working with you and welcome to WCCUSD.
Yeah.
We welcome you, Dr. Hurst, to West Contra Costa Unified School District. I saw you as a great candidate for this job and I know you elevate our district in the positive direction, so welcome aboard.
I want to say that I believe Dr. Hurst was the best candidate. I think we are presenting to this community someone who can help. And I say help because nobody can do this work alone. That's why I say help. I think that we are presenting to the community someone who can help take us to the next level. And I am greatly appreciative of that. And I look forward to working with him. And I have confidence in the experience and ability that he is bringing to this table. So I'm going to leave it at that. Like Mr. Christian said, you know, we got work to do and we're going to do it. So Dr. Hurst, Mrs. Hurst, I know the vote hasn't happened yet, but welcome to our community. We appreciate you. So the, the motion was made by Mr. Gonzalez Hoi and seconded by Smith Folds. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, you're kicking it off with the vote tonight, so it's on you.
I'm kicking it off with an excited yes, absolutely.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds? Just a dramatic pause. Yes, of course.
Christian, yes.
Emiliano, yes.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. The motion carries. Thank you very much, Board. I want to give the Hurst a moment to speak. If you all don't mind, Dr. Hurst.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone. And what I think I'm going to do, especially on the advice of Trustee Smith Folds, making sure I keep my wife first. I'm allowing her to speak and then I'm going to come back and say my thanks and appreciation. So just one second.
I want to say good evening to everyone. To the, the Board of Trustees, the, the staff, the students, the parents, the community of West Contra Costa. What a blessing it is to have this grand opportunity to serve here in this community. And I've had a chance today to meet a few staff members and certainly the board and I'm just so grateful for the welcoming spirit that I felt here today. We're excited. We have a heart for kids. We, we have a passion to help kids reach their highest potential. I'm also an educator. I work with kids who are blind. This is my 20th year. And, and we just believe that this is our purpose. This is what, this is part of our life journey for being here is to, to help kids. And we're just grateful for this amazing community and thank you for welcoming us in. And we're excited to partner and serve alongside of you as we help kids reach their highest potential. So thank you so much for having us in this community.
I'd also like to share a few things. I first want to talk about the, the process, but before I do that, I want to say thank you to President Phillips, the trustee, Smith Folds, trustee Reckler, trustee Christian, trustee Gonzalez Hoi, Emiliano and Leon as well. And I just want to share my thanks for the process. I also want to say hello. Good evening to Superintendent Matt Duffy. Good to see you here too, sir. And to all the executive team that are here in the room with me, good evening. I know there's probably teachers listening, support staff, parents, community members, business partners, university officials. Good evening to all of you. I just want to share my thanks and appreciation for the opportunity to go through the process and it was quite a process. I really appreciated it and I did listen to all of your voices. And I took the, the process as serious as the Board of Directors took it as well. And through the process, I heard your voices and I just want to share with you a few things that was shared in the interview process, especially through the thought exchange surveys. This is what you shared about what you want to see in your next superintendent. You shared that you want to see a superintendent that's visionary and that unified the community around a vision of equity and access and inclusion. You said that you want to see the next superintendent work together to grow academic achievement for all students. And I've heard that mentioned again and again and again. I've heard this as well. You said that you want a superintendent that's going to provide a safe, welcoming and uplifting environment for all. You said that you wanted a superintendent that's relational, that listens, that's collaborative and has great communication skills. You shared that you wanted a superintendent that's accessible, visible, responsive and approachable. You also shared that you wanted a superintendent that's inspirational, motivational and supportive. And then one of the other things that really resonated with me is you said you wanted a superintendent that had integrity, a sense of humor, that's humble, modest, transparent, empathetic and builds relational trust. And that is a tall order, but I welcome those expectations that you shared during the thought exchange survey. And that not only resonated, resonated with me, but also these three other things that I wanted to share with you. There was one thing that really stood out to me as well about your mission statement. And I want to read this and you probably know the mission statement. It says, providing the highest quality of education to enable all students to make positive life choices, strengthen our community and participate in a diverse environment or society. That really resonated with me because when you talk about providing the highest quality education, you're really talking about working together as a community to provide a world-class education for our students. And that inspired me. The other piece, you talked about strengthening our students so they can give back to our community. That inspired me. And then the other piece was making sure that our students are able to graduate, college-ready, career-ready, so they can participate in a global and diverse society. All those things inspired me. The other thing I wanted to share with you that really was inspirational to me is the conversation and I watched a board meeting in which I had the board president and some of the board trustees ensued in the conversation about educational equity. And some of the student representatives jumped into the conversation as well. And they were talking about removing barriers for our students and also providing opportunities and access for our students. Those are the types of things that motivate me, that inspire me, that I want to work together with all of you in the community and inside the district as well. Those are the things that are important for me. So I take everything that you shared as far as all of those expectations through the thought exchange process. And also I take the mission seriously and educational equity seriously as well. And I embrace this opportunity to lead alongside with you. And I do understand and agree with you, what you're saying, trustee Smith Folds, that it's going to take a village. It's not just on the superintendent. It's going to take a village to make this work and to push through so that we can reach our mission. But I am here and I'm in it and I'm here for the long haul as well. And what I will share and just kind of leave with you is I am excited about this opportunity. When I am here full-time, there will be an opportunity for me to enact my entry plan, which really is about me sitting down with all stakeholders, all of you who are listening and those who are not, and listening, listening to you, listening to all the great things that's happening, but also listening to the challenges and what we can do to get better for our students. So I'm really excited about that. The work and the opportunity to sit down, get to know all of you. Again, thank you so much from the bottom of our heart for this opportunity to work alongside with you. Thank you again.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hurst. Thank you so much, Mrs. Hurst. Again, we welcome you to our, our community. Well, heck, it's, it's your community as well now, but we welcome you and we look forward to, to working with you. And to the community, just to let you know, Dr. Hurst, as they began to transition into this new space, we will have more formal opportunities for folks to meet him and his wife. So that's coming. It will be scheduled. So please don't think this is the first and last time, you know, you will, you will see them. But there will be an opportunity for multiple opportunities for him to engage and interact with, with community. So I just wanted to put that out there for you all, okay? So with that, we are going to move to the next item, though. And the next item is F2. Accept public comment and approve receipt of initial bargaining proposals from the United Teachers of Richmond, Teamsters Local 856, West Contra Costa Administrators Association, School Supervisors Association IFPTE Local 21 and West Contra Costa Unified School District with each of the above named units. That the Board of Education receive any public comment on the initial proposals and approve receipt of the submitted proposals. To expedite the work of the Board of Education, the subsequent eight related items are being included as sub items under this item and shall be received by a single vote in a manner similar to items that are placed upon the consent calendar. So the first bargaining unit that is up is United Teachers of Richmond. And are they presenting their proposal themselves?
Tonight, there won't be any presentations of the proposals. They're just being submitted to the board as they are written. This is just part of the natural process when you're doing an actual contract, not an MOU that are sun, that are sunsetting. You have to put all of the articles that will be discussed out for the public to be able to provide comment to the board as we begin the negotiations process. So there's no presentation tonight. There's no agenda. It is literally just for the public to provide any commentary. The board then just votes to receive them. This is not about any negotiations. This has nothing to do with the MOUs for spring or anything else. This is just a natural part of the collective bargaining process.
So just to clarify, though, what's being sunshine tonight? The individual unions are not literally speaking on their own and saying, okay.
And each, each was given the opportunity to do that. None came forward. They all, if they want to use public comment, they will. As can anyone from the public discuss any of the eight proposals. And what you have is what the United Teachers of Richmond, the articles that they wanted to discuss. We then mentioned the ones that we wanted to for this, et cetera, et cetera. So it's all there in the packet and we're here just to listen to the public.
Okay, that's fine. I was just trying to make sure that they had the opportunity to sunshine their own proposals if that's what they wanted to do. But they did and they chose not to. Okay. Board, any questions? Okay, any public comment? I'm sorry. I went too fast. Smith Folds.
Do you think it would have been easier or more transparent if we would have had some type of presentation saying what each one of those articles was? So that the public would be able to see it and then see if they wanted to make a comment on it? Is the expectation that the public would have looked at these articles on their own and then be able to come back and make comment about it?
So part of the issue with collective bargaining is you don't really bargain in public. So if the public had areas of concern that they wanted to bring forward to the board's attention as part of the process, this would be their opportunity. So for example, if they saw that we had, we were going to talk about hours and they wanted to talk about hours, that would be their opportunity to say, hey, when you're talking about hours, you might want to consider this. But no, you don't do a proposal for each because then that would be potentially stating a position for the collective bargaining process. It's these are the topics.
Not really was I speaking to a proposal. It's just like, this is Article Five. This is what Article Five says. This is what's going to be talked about. This is Article Six. Do you kind of get what I was saying?
Yeah, it's just the titles. That's, that's all you present is Article Five is health and welfare benefits. Article Six is hours of work. And that's what's on each of these documents.
Okay. Thank you, President Phillips.
Okay, board, any other questions? Okay. Folks, it's time for public comment. If you have a comment, please raise your hand. Okay. There's one hand raised. Dr. Wolf.
Okay, it's Jahan Burn.
Good evening. I have two comments. First is that generally the sunshining documents are just far too vague and simple for members of the public to be able to contribute any meaningful dialogue or or comment on the structure and process of the bargaining. And the second is a request that to stop all bargaining processes until the new superintendent is in place. He needs to aggressively oversee the negotiations with the union to make sure that students are being placed first. They are the customers of this school district, not the teachers, not the administrators, not the Teamster employees and others. And to make sure that our students will be able to come back to class in person in a reasonable and efficient amount of time, like virtually every other school district in the country is doing. And to make sure that if there are pandemics and other interruptions, that we don't put the school district in a position of having to agree to such weak MOUs that really get us nowhere and we're a year into this pandemic with so little progress to show. Thank you.
And there was one second hand that came up right as we were beginning and that is Maya Bessjonik.
I just wanted to say welcome to our new superintendent. That's it.
That concludes public comment on this item. All we ask the board to do is vote to accept each of the articles.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept each of the articles?
I move to accept each of the items.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
I second. Oh, you beat me, trustee Christian.
He beat you. So it was Christian on that one. Board, any discussion? Okay.
I have a question or it might be a point of information. So was the motion just to accept everything? Was, was the motion to accept every, everything that was sunshine?
So just to declare, yeah, yes, it's just to clarify.
All the way to H.
Yes. Everything.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So on the motion, I don't know, we, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Emiliano, yes.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. The motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to go on to item F3, which is approved the proposed bond program site budget authorization. I'm assuming this is Mr. Freeze.
Yes, tonight we're asking the board to approve.
Yes, tonight we're asking the board to approve the central budget for the bond program for fiscal years 2022 and 23. This $8.5 million, our annual, our annual burn rate over the last five years has been about 3.4 to 4.5 million annually. So this aligns with our program and our budget again for fiscal years 22 and 23. So we asked tonight the board approve the budget increase from the bond fund.
Thank you very much, Mr. Freeze. Board, any questions? Okay, seeing no questions. Do we have any public comment? Okay, no public comment. Can I have a motion to approve this item?
Thank you. Mister, trustee Leon beat me.
All right, Mister Leon. Mr. Gonzalez, why are you seconding?
Yes.
Okay. On to the vote, Mr. Gonzalez, why?
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckless, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Christian, yes.
Leon, yes.
Is Emiliano gone?
She had to go take an exam.
Okay. Phillips, yes. So the motion carries. And we're going to move on to item F4, which is acceptance of Contra Costa County Office of Education's second quarterly report for 2021 Williams settlement legislation.
Yes, tonight we bring for you, before you the Williams settlement. So this is just from the county and it just says that basically that there were no, no complaints for the first two quarters of the fiscal year.
Thank you very much. Board, any questions? No questions, no complaints, no questions. All right. Any public comment? No public comment. Board, can I have a motion to accept this report?
So moved.
Okay, move by Gonzalez. Can I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much, Mister Leon. On the vote, Gonzalez.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckless, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Christian, yes.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you so much. We're going to move to item F5, Williams lawsuit complaints quarterly report.
Yes, and so what we bring before you tonight is the, the quarter from January 1st to March 31st. And again, we have no complaints that were filed.
Board, any questions? Okay, seeing no questions. Any public comment? No public comment. Okay. Can I have a motion to accept this report as well?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, moved by Gonzalez, why? Seconded by Leon. Any discussion, board? None. Okay. Mr. Gonzalez, why? Please start the roll call for the vote.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckless, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Christian, yes.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you so much. Board, we have a few things left to do and then we're supposed to go back in a closed session. So we're going to go a little bit further before I ask to extend the meeting, but we're going to now jump back to item C8, which is authorize district staff to complete the application process for obtaining a CDS school code for the K-12 Virtual Academy for operation in the 2122 school year. This item was pulled by trustee Reckler. Trustee Reckler, you have any questions about this item?
I do, thank you. So the reason why I pulled it is that the board has never received a formal report on the school. And I think there are a number of, first of all, just a commercial for the general public that we're opening an online school. But second, I think that there is opportunity for the board to ask questions about its build out, its budget, staffing, marketing. I mean, I got, I have a number of questions that I'd like to ask about it. So that's the reason why I pulled, I pulled it.
I'm going to speak to Smith Folds for a moment as the academic. Did this come, didn't this come to your committee? No?
So what we did was in, or Mr. Raylio may be better to go with the timeline, but Mr. Raylio, correct me if I'm wrong. We had Ms. McCormick, Ms. Edith McCormick Jordan, Jordan McCormick, McCormick Jordan come. And she gave a presentation to the academic, the academic committee. And then the virtual school had their own presentation to where they had the community come and ask questions and she went through it again. So yes, it did come to academic committee and then virtual school had its own presentation that people were able to join separate from the academic committee that was independently done.
And academic committee, virtual school is coming back to academic committee in May as well to provide an update to the work that's being done.
And tonight's item is only part of the process. We have to apply for a CDS code to be able to have it start in the fall. We always plan to bring back more details to the board. This is just a formal requirement when you have to dot I's and cross T's in the process to have an action item on the agenda.
Okay, trustee Reckler.
So I think that this is actually quite serious and that this, this is a serious thing. We're opening up a new school. And I think that before CD, CD number should be requested that the board should be able to have its questions answered. And I appreciate the work of the academic committee and I think that a majority of the work should be done there. But I do think that this is quite serious and the whole board should weigh in on it and be allowed to ask its questions. And then once again, it's a commercial for the general public that's out there watching this. So when it's buried in the academic committee, you know, you don't get to let the sunlight that I think is important. So.
Trustee Reckler, can I ask you a question? Because this is just a process issue and not a planning issue around the school and the programming. If, if I commit to making sure that this is on the agenda for the entire board so you're able to ask the questions that you want to ask in a public space, would that be sufficient for you?
It will this time, but never again.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. I appreciate you. All right. So, so are there any other questions? All right. Is there any public comment on this item? All right. No public comment. Okay, can I have a motion to approve this item? With the caveat that it will come back to the full board for a discussion. And, and that discussion may be after it goes to the academic subcommittee the next time, right? Just so, you know, we're around to doing a process. But can I have that motion from someone, please?
So moved.
Okay, can I have a second from someone, please?
I'll second. I'm sorry.
The tie goes to Christian on this one. All right. So it's been moved and seconded. On to the vote, Mr. Gonzalez.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckler?
Sorry, Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Christian, yes.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you very much. This item carries. The next item is C11. Now, C11 and C12 really do go together. It's really, I mean, they're two items, but they, they go together. So trustee Reckler, you pulled C11 and C12, and I know you want.
Correct. So I pulled both of them because they do go together. And first of all, it's a $2 million item, so I thought it should come off consent. But even more than that is that once again, I think this is a commercial and I'd like to have Ms. Logan explain what these are because I think people will be very interested in it. And we went and we walked the school today and we walked Madera and there was a teacher asking about, you know, like, how can I hear? We've got the fans going all the time and I can't hear. So we started talking about what was coming and I thought, hey, this is a great time just for, once again, a little commercial about the, the equipment that's coming. I would also recommend that we, as a point of order, we do just a little extension of like maybe 10 minutes.
So, so what I'm going to ask is, this is actually our last, believe it or not, with the way some of the meetings have been going around reopening and COVID, this is actually our last item in open session. We've gotten through the entire agenda. We still are supposed to go back into closed session to talk about, I think it's labor negotiations. But the actual agenda or work for tonight, this is the last item. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask for us to extend the meeting to 11:15. Now, this is the last item that we're going to discuss and then we're going to recess open session. And then we're going to go into closed session and then that'll give us, you know, at least 30 minutes to, you know, 40, 30, 40 minutes to hear whatever the negotiation update is that we need. So I'm asking for 11:15. But for the public, you all would know that this is the last agenda item that we have to deal with this evening. Mr. Gonzalez, why?
Just to confirm, so if we were to need more time in closed session, we wouldn't be able to extend that time, correct?
So we do have one extension.
Okay.
So yes, so this would be it.
Okay. Well, then I actually would like to, just in case, I would like to make a motion to extend till 12 o'clock.
And then a point of order, when are we making board comment?
So we do have board comments before we go into. I'm sorry, board, can you actually recess for five minutes, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that means we're back at 10:30 according to my clock.
We didn't take a vote.
Oh. True statement, sir. So I will turn my camera back up at 10:30. I don't know what to do.
Yeah, majority of the board left, so.
So we can't do anything at this point?
Well, are we done? Like, is, what happens?
I don't know. I, I, Dr. Wolf, Dr. Duffy, or Mr. Duffy, what's happening?
At this point, we are just sort of in a lull moment there.
We, we will be right back. We are dealing with someone who walked into the space. We're, we will be right back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
For clarifying.
Wonderful.
Okay, so.
It's like we are still talking, just pretend we're still talking.
Trustee Smith Folds, as, trustee Smith Folds, as second in command, you can take over the meeting and you can call for a five-minute recess and we can make that official.
Enough said, sir.
Remember, guys, we're still live.
Yeah.
And we don't have a, we don't have a quorum at the moment. So we're just in a hiatus.
Oh, we don't have three. I see. Okay.
Can I still take over the meeting?
Oh, there's, oh, we do. So yes, we can make the motion right now to recess.
Uh, trustee Reckler or any trustee, would you like to make a motion to recess for five minutes, please?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to recess for five minutes.
Actually, we might be okay. We're okay. We don't need to motion. I think we're okay.
You're robbing me of my joy. This is like, I was, like, I had everything, like, superintendent Duffy gave me the green light. I was ready to go. All right, next time, next time.
All right about that, everybody. The last thing that I heard was there was a motion to extend till midnight. Yeah, that's the last thing that I heard.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I'm going to make a substitute motion that we extend the meeting to 11:15. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Since that's the last motion that's on the floor, that's what we're going to vote on first. Mr. Gonzalez, why?
I would like to make a comment before we vote. I just want to make sure that we have enough time to discuss the item in closed session. So I would encourage the rest of the board to vote it down. If we're done by 11:15, then great. I mean, I, I have to work at a 7:00 AM, so I totally get it. But if we don't have enough time to discuss labor negotiations, which is such an important item right now, I just want to make sure that we do in closed session. So I would encourage my colleagues to vote no on President Phillips' motion. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Because I'm going to make a comment as well. But are there any other comments on the motion?
I just can't remember the last time we actually ever ended early, so that's, that's my hesitation.
Okay. The comment that I'm going to make is some of us are actually physically here. And I, I did not want to say this, but in fairness, you know, we have, for the first time, the majority of the board is in one room. The majority of the cabinet is in one room. And it's not really fair when people are not here to make other people stay here, you know, until midnight. So I'm just going to put that out there. That's my opinion. I said it. But that said, we're on to the vote. So Mr. Gonzalez, why?
Gonzalez, oh, no.
Reckler?
Smith Folds, no.
Christian, no.
Leon, no.
Phillips, yes. Motion fails. So on to the original motion.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckless, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Christian, yes.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, no. All right. So the meeting has been extended till 12. And we are on item.
C11.
C11 and C12.
Yes. So as previously explained, first it's $2 million, so I thought it should come off consent. But second, I think this is an opportunity for Ms. Logan to tell us about the purchase of this equipment, which I think is awesome and people should know about it.
Great. Thank you. Good evening. Can you all hear me okay? Excellent. So I am excited to talk about this item this evening. Essentially, this would be a purchase of classroom audio voice amplification system for all WCCUSD classrooms. So that includes gen ed classrooms as well as special ed classrooms. This is the kind of technology that is fairly easy to set up and install and allows a teacher to wear around his, her neck, a necklace that is lightweight and sits right on the chest. And the audio then is projected through a flat screen panel that generally sits opposite where the teacher is so that every and any student in the classroom can hear the teacher when he, she speaks in a normal voice. So whether the teacher is masked now, whether the teacher is no longer wearing a mask someday in the future, we will no longer use masks. This, it's really incredible technology that allows for every child to access the learning. Research shows that this kind of voice amplification particularly helps students with not only auditory issues but English language learners and, and really all learners. So again, this is an exciting opportunity for us to build out our technology infrastructure in all of our schools. We've surveyed all teachers and have 93.4% teachers responding that yes, this is a device that they are excited to have, that they will use and are committed to use. We've piloted the device in a number of classrooms this spring unanimously. All teachers said, this is great. We've piloted the device, uh, in a number of classrooms this spring. Unanimously, all teachers said, this is great, can I have it tomorrow? Um, so bad news is that it is not available tomorrow because these, these items are backordered because every district in the country, uh, wants this kind of system. And so we need to buy it now so that we can have it in our classrooms for August, uh, in all of our classrooms. I do wanna be sure to note that we have a temporary right-now solution for teachers who are coming back, starting Monday, to do the room and zoom in their classrooms, and they are small, portable, kind of personal voice amplification systems, um, that are, you know, they're, they're pretty good. They're not classroom-grade the way these systems are. So these are really the permanent solution, but the personal systems that we have for this spring will very much help teachers with that amplification and help, uh, students to be able to hear. So happy to take questions and, um, excited about this path forward.
Board members, do you have any questions? I see one, uh, Reckler, this is your item. We pulled it. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, no, I don't have any questions. I do have comments, though.
We're doing these two together. We're doing eleven and twelve together, just so everyone knows. Said you have questions on eleven or twelve, ask them. Uh, Smith Folds.
So, Ms. Logan, the temporary devices that you have now set up for us, people coming back, what happens to those when we get the permanent ones? Where do those go?
So we will repurpose those. Um, we won't use them necessarily in classrooms, but libraries, community spaces, uh, potentially outdoors, other spaces that where we could use voice amplification. Uh, we've talked with, uh, teachers and site members about for family meetings, um, that sort of thing. So there could be multiple uses for those after the fact.
And will our speech pathologists also get these voice amplifications to be able to use when they're working with our students? Because it's, you know, it's very, it's intricate that they be able to hear the sounds and hear what the teacher's saying very clearly. So are they gonna be offered the same technology?
So the idea with these classroom systems, they really are designed for a large space, uh, with lots of folks in the room. So those would be designated for classrooms, and then these personal devices could be used. Um, the ones that are buying for spring can also be repurposed for smaller groups, um, and other settings. Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that they're on the radar because yes, they're in a smaller room, but they're gonna be spread out. Like, they can't all sit right next to each other like they did before. So they're in a smaller space, but they're gonna be spread out, so they still need to have access to that technology. Um.
Definitely, definitely.
Those are all my questions for right now, President Phillips.
Thank you. Any other board questions? Okay, seeing none. Uh, public comment? Both of you have comments, please raise your hand. I see three and four. Uh, any other public comments? Right, four. Okay, Dr. Wolf, please start.
Mariela Quayar?
This is Mariela Quayar. I, I, um, I have a lot of questions about this equipment. I think it's good in a way that some teachers might use this, but I would like to, I work as a teacher assistant, and I work in special education. We have some kids that are very sensitive to sound. Sometimes when we are, um, you know, singing, sometimes kids, just by singing or talking, some kids close their, um, you know, put their hands in their ears. I'm just thinking a lot of how are you gonna implement with some, um, students that have sensory, um, difficulties, and also if this is gonna be an investment, cause you're spending two million dollars, if I heard correctly, about, about buying this equipment. Um, and I would like that teachers use it, but I would really, um, regret if teachers are not gonna use this, and the equipment is gonna be, you know, end up in their desk, like, in a drawer. And so please, just make sure that if you buy equipment, that it's really useful for everybody.
And our next public speaker is Jean Kinster.
Hello, I'm excited about this equipment, and my previous district, ten years ago, I used similar equipment, so that was way pre-pandemic. And we were, um, when we were trained, it was brought to our attention that if students can hear you, they perform better and they do better in school. And I was lucky enough to even use one of the systems that was able to be used with one of my students that had a hearing aid. There were special attachments that would go into his hearing aid, so that he could hear me even better with this equipment than the rest of the class. So I'm really excited that this district is bringing this equipment onboard, and I really look forward to it, because as we were trained in my other district, if the students can hear you, they can learn better, they can perform better.
Our last hand up is Joanna Pace.
Uh, this is Joanna Pace, a former parent and a retired teacher. Um, first, President Phillips, in the last couple of items, there's been something about the way you've put your mask back on. There were getting a lot of static when you speak, so if you could, uh, speaking of being able to understand things and hear well. And then finally, I just wanna say that as a, a, a veteran teacher, I, uh, was given equipment like this in my last years of teaching, and, um, universally, uh, teachers on our staff found it very helpful. It meant, uh, teachers didn't understand how they were straining their voices, actually, to just do their job every day. And once they had this equipment, they realized they could speak, uh, in a way that rested their voices, so they actually had more endurance. Um, so it's a, it's a wise choice. Thanks for, um, voting yes on this.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much, uh, for everyone who called in, and thank you, uh, Dr. Wolf. Um, board, can I have a motion to approve item C eleven and twelve?
I'll move. Second. I'll move eleven.
Okay, we, we kinda talked over each other for a second. Uh, who, uh, who's moving eleven and twelve?
Trustee Reckler moved it, and I seconded it.
Okay, right on. Um, any discussion board? Um, in order, Mr. Gonzalez, you're first.
Thank you. Very quickly, I just wanna say I used one of these in my last year of teaching in the classroom, because I had a student with a special need, uh, that needed to hear me louder, uh, and it was great. Um, I really, really loved it, uh, so I'm excited that we're doing this. Thank you, trustee Reckler, for pulling it so that we could have a discussion with the community hearing that we're getting this technology, and thank you, uh, Ms. Logan, for facilitating this. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, I, I'm so glad that we're purchasing this, and I'm hoping also that everybody hears it. That was really, the reason why I pulled it is so that we could have a little commercial. Um, I'm hoping that it is well advertised to teachers and that there is training, training, training on how to use it. And I have hearing issues and auditory processing issues. This pandemic has been absolutely horrible. I think over the last year, I've heard like fifty percent of what everybody said, with the mask and the screens and the plexiglass and everything. It's been so frustrating for me personally. So, um, you know, I, I, I'm in full support, and, um, and thank you for doing that.
Okay.
Sorry, President Phillips.
No, go ahead, ma'am.
I think that we need to make sure that we train our teachers. I think we need to make sure that we inform our parents. So if they have a child that's sensitive to the hearing, that we make sure that we have a way to kinda mitigate that. So we take into consideration what the caller did say. There are some students who have sensitive hearing to the other way, where it's very loud for them, and that would be uncomfortable also. So I think that we just need to train, we need to be flexible, we need to use the technology to the benefit, to the benefit like we have, and I do wanna make sure that we're not just buying one thing for the spring and then never using it again. So we need to have a repurposing plan, so all of them are being used at all times in multiple different ways and multiple different fr- uh, factions. So we're not just kind of flushing money down the drain, but we're using everything. We're using all of those dollars to where we can see student achievement. All of those dollars are being used for student achievement. Thank you so much, and please don't forget about our speech pathologists and our paraprofessionals. And some of our teachers may like the smaller one because it's portable. You know what I mean? They can carry it around with them, thinking about our elementary school teachers. So keep all options on the table for teachers and staff to choose what's best for them. Thank you.
Any other board comments? Okay, let's vote, guys. Um, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. The motion carries. Okay, board, that completes all of the items on, uh, all the discussion and action items on the agenda. Um, so the next thing on here is comments from the Board of Education and future agenda items. Uh, so, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you, President Phillips. Um, I just wanted to say thank you again to Superintendent Duffy, your staff, and everybody working, uh, so hard right now to ensure we open our schools safely on Monday. I just wanted to give a quick shout out to, again, to Vincent Myers and Mr. Freeze for being so welcoming the last two weeks, uh, for us to do these safety walkthroughs. Uh, they have honestly been a highlight for me, um, because I've been able to see exactly what's going on at the sites, uh, and the needs, as well as, uh, the areas that are already in progress. Um, Friday, I'm excited to go with trustee Christian to Kennedy and Elsrieda High School, uh, and then we might actually stop afterwards in some other elementary schools that we've been asked to look at. Uh, and Tuesday, I'm excited to go virtually with, uh, trustee Smith Folds to Pinot Valley High School and Hercules High School. Um, and then, uh, once I go to Richmond High, I'm gonna collect all my, oh, no, I'm missing a few others. But anyways, I'm almost there, uh, visiting all the high schools, um, making sure that they're already unsafe. Um, I wanted to, uh, invite, uh, the community to our charter oversight committee meeting this coming Monday, the nineteenth, at four PM. We're gonna continue to review the draft of our new charter school policy, which is pretty long, um, and it's pretty exciting, uh, at least for trustee Reckler and I. Um, and not to steal her thunder, but I also wanna encourage people to come to our next academic, uh, committee meeting. We have two, actually. Um, and on, uh, April twenty-sixth, please correct in your comments later, trustee Smith Folds, as I was wrong. Well, on April twenty-sixth, we're getting an update on summer school. Um, and I know a lot of people called in about summer and the fall, and we're gonna be having a long discussion about what summer school's gonna look like on the twenty-sixth. So if you're interested, um, four to six PM, um, and I won't steal your thunder, trustee, uh, Smith Folds, on our next academic meeting, which comes before that. Um, and I wanted to end to say that I'm excited about my hub. Uh, Superintendent Duffy, I'm excited to volunteer with you, uh, and, and do this together somehow. So, uh, thank you, everybody, for your patience and everything you're all doing, uh, to make Monday happen. That's it. Thank you.
Reckler?
Hey, thank you. I do have a couple of comments. Uh, so I wanna thank Mr. Freeze and Mr. Rancher at Midori today, doing a walkthrough with a couple of teachers, and it was great, and they had everything except for the pump for their sanitizer, jug, sixty-four ounce sanitizer. So it was good, good to be out. Um, I wanna give a commercial for the budget meeting, which is Friday, three to five, and our simple, it's since, scintillating topics are bond refinancing and audits. But come, it's like friendly. We don't really talk about numbers that much. It's just all conceptual at this point. So if you wanna come and learn, it's complex stuff. We break it down and make it easy. And then, uh, for items, uh, agenda items, I am requesting for every agenda from now until winter, updates on spring, summer, and fall, and also in the Friday memos. So just standing reports for every agenda, what we're doing in spring, what we're doing in summer, what we're doing in fall. Um, I also wanna give a shout out to Saber Chi from Elsrieda High School. She is a young lady, and she made the Elsrieda High School baseball team. It is the JV team, and they are not playing, so it's a little commercial to find out what's going on with JV Sports, and can we bring them back so she can play? And then finally, I wanna wish my husband a happy birthday. And here I am. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Smith Folds.
Um, the academic committee, thank you, trustee Gonzalez Hoi. The academic has a special, um, committee meeting on the twenty-first. Uh, just wanted to check, yeah, we have a special academic com- committee meeting on the twenty-first. We're talking about the black experience in dual immersion. So we are going to have plenty of people coming in to talk to that. Everyone from our admin to our teachers, to our parents of black students in dual immersion. So we are doing a deep dive on the black experience in dual immersion on the academic committee. Um, as far as a next agenda item to come back, I would love for us to bring back, uh, in the safety and climate team committee. We talked about, uh, sports, so I would love for that to come to the board, so we can have that conversation with the board about, around sports, and, uh, where we go from here with sports and the safety around it. And then I would like to say thank you to, uh, uh, Ms. Dean at Collins for sending a video, so I could see how, uh, Collins is prepared. I wanna thank Mr. Freeze in advance for getting those other videos of our schools in Area One to me. And I wanna thank trustee Gonzalez Hoi for going in person and doing a FaceTime call with me, so I can see those other schools. I wanna thank Dr. Hurst and his wife for coming tonight, and thank you for, uh, again, choosing West Contra Costa Unified School District, and you are much appreciated. And, um, I believe that that's it. That's it. Thank you, Pres- uh, look, you're surprised, President Phillips. When we say something else, something a little quirky. I don't know, but that's it. For now, that's it. I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Christian?
Yeah, thank you, uh, President Phillips, and, you know, as we close out tonight, um, you know, I wanna, once again, just, this, this, thank the community in large, everybody that worked diligently hard, the staff, everybody, um, to, to make things happen, all of the unions, the, um, everybody. And so, um, you know, as we push forward, we're gonna continue to build, and, um, and thank Dr. Hurst and his wife, you know, that we'll be able to push that district forward and see better days ahead. Um, and then also to give a, uh, update on the safety and the climate meeting we just had this past, uh, Monday, uh, with trustees, Smith Folds and myself, uh, discussed many areas that, uh, were brought to light, which was sports and, and the counselors and hiring more counselors for our schools, to make sure that we have counselors in the elementary schools, uh, middle and high schools, uh, making sure that we stay on top of everything, making sure none of our kids fall through the cracks. Um, and then also, you know, for the safety, uh, making sure that the CSOs have all the proper things they need to keep our schools safe, and, and that they stay safe themselves. Uh, and, um, so we covered many areas, and so we wanna invite you to attend the safety climate meetings once a month, and, uh, be a part of these meetings, because it's about having safe schools and making sure that all of our kids, all of our students will be safe and be able to enter on the school campus feeling good about their school sites, and be able to get the education and move forward. So, um, once again, I wanna thank everybody for working hard. Thank you.
Mr. Leo?
Okay, um, I'd like to thank, um, trustee Gonzalez Hoi for inviting Ms. Emiliano and I on tour in the schools. Um, it was really insightful and a great opportunity to see, like, how, like, the preparedness of schools and the stuff behind the scenes and the hard work that the staff and administrators are, 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 are putting in to, to ensure a safe reopening. Um, once again, I'd like to welcome, uh, Dr. Hurst to West Contra Costa Unified School District. And I'd like to conclude by just thanking everyone for working so hard on working towards a safe reopening for our students this coming- on working towards a safe reopening for our students this coming Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Um, I would like to thank, uh, everyone for a productive meeting. I would like to thank, uh, members of the Cabinet who are here. Um, I want people to know, um, that we have, uh, our Director for Facilities, uh, Louis Freeze is here. Our Selva Director, Kristen Hardy, is here. Um, our, uh, Chief Academic Officer, Ruben Rellio, is here. Uh, our, uh, Technology Officer, Tracy Logan, is here, and our Communications Director, uh, Robert Jordan is here. So, uh, there are a lot of folks, um, here, uh, on campus, and, you know, and we're trying to model, uh, for folks, uh, because I think that, uh, you know, it's important, and, and to be honest, it felt really good to see all of those additional faces um, walk in here. Um, it felt like a board meeting, um, but, you know, I'm, I'm used to, you know, being in. Um, and so I just wanna say to all of those staff members who are still here, you know, welcome. Uh, don't be a stranger, uh, you, you, you are, you know, I know this is the first time that we've been together in a long time. Um, but, you know, we will make space for you. Um, and I do appreciate you being here very much. And to Dr. Hurst and to, uh, Mrs. Hurst, um, once again, welcome, uh, to this community. Um, we look forward to working with you, and I think that the reception that you got from everyone, uh, we had labor partners calling in, uh, we had board members saying, um, what they said. Um, and I think that, uh, it was genuine, it really was. And I, I really believe that people look forward to working with you, uh, and engaging you, you know, in this process. So I'm, I'm very happy and excited about, you know, what is to come. Um, so that said, we are going to go to Item H, which is the next scheduled, uh, Board of Education meeting, uh, and that's on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, that will be another hybrid meeting. And with that, at ten fifty-five, we are going to, uh, return to closed session. There is one item, uh, for this closed session discussion. It is conference with labor negotiators. Uh, if there are folks who have public comment on this item before we go back in, um, again, the item is conference with labor negotiators. If there's anyone who has public comment on this particular closed session item, uh, now would be your opportunity to, um, comment on that. So do we have any hands raised? Okay.
No hands, no hands.
Okay, I don't see any hands. Um, the Board is going to, uh, adjourn into, um, closed session, and then after closed session, uh, the Board will come back out in some form or fashion to, uh, report out and then adjourn the entire meeting. Okay, so thank you, everyone, um, good night. Um, you can stick around if you want, we'll be back, but the, uh, agenda items that we had to cover tonight, um, have been done.
Okay, all right, we got everybody uh report out for closed session. There's nothing to report out. Um so with that, we are going to adjourn the meeting at twelve oh one a m. You all have a safe uh evening. See you next time.